Welcome to our Planning Commission meeting. Today is Thursday, December 11th, 2025. Can we begin the meeting by doing the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Do we have verification of legal notice? Thank you. There's nothing in our consent agenda. We do have some time before our 9:05 item for public input. This is the time for anyone in the public or here on Zoom or in chambers to speak about an item that is not on today's agenda. The podium is open, so you will have three minutes. So as long as that topic is not on today's agenda, you're welcome to come to the podium. In the meantime, we will wait for our 9:05 item. We'll take a look in the Zoom room to see if there's any hands for public input. Thank you. Yeah, so we'll just take a few minutes. All right. It is 9:05, so we'll begin with our first timed item. Public hearing for item 6A, 9:05 a.m. Consideration of Proposed Major Use Permit PL 25-13, UP 21-15, and mitigated negative declaration IS 21-16 for commercial cannabis cultivation of 19.6 acres of outdoor canopy and a type 13 distribution, self-transport only. The applicant is Rancho Lake LLC. The location is 19955, 19986, 20110, and 22222 Grange Road in Middletown. The APNs are 014-209-08 and 014, sorry, yeah, 014-300-02, 03, and 04. And this item was continued from the November 13th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Staff?
Good morning, Commissioners and Chair. Mic check, mic check. Are we on? Okay, perfect. My name is Mary Claybon. I'm a senior planner at the Community Development Department. For your consideration, today is major use permit PL 2513 for UP 2115 and IS 2116 Rancho Lake LLC project. The applicant and consultant are present in chambers, and the applicant's consultant has prepared a brief presentation following staff's presentation. The permit today consists of up to 854,840 square feet, which is collectively 19.6 acres of outdoor commercial cannabis canopy area within a 34-acre cultivation area, five 6,000-square-foot harvest, storage, and staging engineered membrane structures for seasonal use, and the total parcel size combined is approximately 1,627 acres. The site is located approximately four and a half miles east-northeast of Middletown. The closest community growth boundary is approximately 1,450 feet south of the Hidden Valley Lake community growth boundary. This is a zoning map here. There is some different zoning on the project parcel itself. However, all cultivation activities are proposed on the land designated as agriculture, which is here. The site description. The terrain is predominantly mountainous with flat valleys at the base of the slopes. Elevation varies from approximately 930 feet to 1,710 feet above sea level. A perennial Class 1 water course traverses the northernmost section of the property from west to east. An intermittent Class 2 water course flows from west to east through the northwest portion of the site. There are several Class 3 water courses that run from south to north, ultimately feeding into Puta Creek. All setbacks from water courses have been identified within the project site plans, and no surface water diversion is proposed. Existing uses and land use improvements at the site include internal compacted dirt road and gravel access roads, a residence, five accessory agricultural structures, and two groundwater wells. The surrounding land uses are rural agriculture and open space with existing residences, ranches, and vineyards. The proposed features include up to 19.6 acres of outdoor canopy area within the 34-acre cultivation area, five 6,000-square-foot harvest, storage, staging engineered membrane structures for seasonal use, two 120-square-foot sheds for chemical pesticide and hazardous material storage. This includes things like fuels and any soils that would need to be contained as well. One 10 by 12, which is 120-square-foot shed for office and security use, 20 5,000-gallon water storage tanks for irrigation and fire suppression, an employee parking area with 14 standard spaces and one accessible space, an onsite portable accessible restroom and handwashing facilities, six-foot galvanized woven wire perimeter fencing with access using metal gates secured by padlocks, security cameras, and additional internal road access improvements to meet Public Resource Code 4290 requirements. Regulations reviewed for compliance include the Lake County General Plan, the Middletown Area Plan, the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and California State Regulations. There are no conflicting policies within the general plan. However, there are no specific policies at this time that do address commercial cannabis cultivation within the general plan. The general plan goals and policies reviewed for this project include land use, health and safety, and noise. The parcel proposed for cultivation is zoned agriculture and has been used to farm oats and hay and cattle grazing since the 1900s. The proposed activities are agricultural in nature and are consistent with the current and past use of the property, the surrounding existing uses, and existing zoning. The proposed harvest, storage, and staging engineered membrane structures for seasonal use will be erected in July of each year and deconstructed in December. The intent is there is for there to be little to no evidence during the winter months and spring seasons of the cultivation activities that had occurred during the summer and the fall the previous year. No permanent foundations for these structures are proposed. The project is consistent with all required setbacks from water resources, development regulations, as well as local and state regulatory requirements related to water quality and contamination. A cultural resources assessment was prepared by Natural Investigations with an intensive pedestrian survey of the proposed cultivation area and adjacent areas. The resource assessment concluded that there are no tribal cultural resources or cultural resources located at the project site. Nor no formal response for consultation was received during the AB 52 notice. The project analysis includes the Lake County Zoning Ordinance Article 7 Rural Lands, Article 8 Rural Residential, Article 5 Agricultural District, Article 35 Floodway Combining District, Article 36 Floodway Fringe, Article 27 Uses Generally Permitted, and Article 33 Waterway Combining District. Tribal comments were received from the Habemotol Pomo of Upper Lake Tribe during the AB 52 tribal notification period. This did occur on May 28th, 2021, and it was sent to local tribes with Aboriginal territory. The deferral to Middletown Rancheria was received by the Habemotol. However, Middletown did not respond at that time. But with that, Rancho Lake, the project sponsor, has voluntarily entered into a cultural resources monitoring treatment agreement with Middletown Rancheria, even though the consultation was not requested. A mitigated negative declaration is the proposed SEQA environmental determination for this project. All identified impacts can be reduced to less than significant with mitigation, and public comment period occurred from November 1st, 2023 through November 30th, 2023. On February 7th, 2025, minor modifications to the initial study were made by staff to correct topographical errors and inconsistencies to reflect the reduction in scope for the clarification and in order to strengthen existing analysis and mitigation measures. Modifications were also made to the Cultural Resources and Tribal Cultural Resources section to further separate the two resources at the desire of the Planning Commission. These changes do not trigger recirculation of the initial study because they are minor in nature and do not result in new impacts or mitigation measures that were not previously analyzed in accordance with SEQA Guidelines Section 1507.3.5. The SEQA initial study found that the project could cause potential impacts to the following resources: aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, hazards and hazardous material, hydrology and water quality, noise, tribal cultural resources, and utilities and service systems. A point of interest for this project was the project scoping. There were several revisions of this project. The Rancho Lake project was originally submitted to the Community Development Department on April 5th of 2021. To ensure compliance with setback requirements from waterways, the existing PG&E utility easement, and to address operational considerations, the scope was revised multiple times, resulting in reductions to both the cultivation area and the canopy size. The final proposal was revised from 73.4 acres of canopy to 19.6 acres of canopy. Another point of interest for this project is hydrology and water resources within the project area. Puta Creek, a perennial Class 1 water course, flows from west to east through the northernmost portion of the project parcel. Crazy Creek, an intermittent Class 2 water course, flows from west to east through the northwest portion of the project parcel and into Puta Creek. Multiple unnamed intermittent Class 3 water courses flow generally from west to east through the project parcel and into Puta Creek. The project meets 150-foot setbacks from Puta Creek and 100-foot setbacks from all other creeks and water courses. According to the Hydrogeological Assessment Report, the proposed cultivation operation has an estimated annual water use requirement of approximately 49.2 acre-feet per year. The recharge rate is estimated to be approximately 793.2 acre-feet per year. The report concluded that the site can sustainably produce the water needed to meet the project demands. The drought management plan submitted by the applicant identifies best management practices per the State Water Resources Quality Control Board's General Order to conserve water resources during normal times and in times of drought. The applicant intends to reduce their outdoor canopy area and water usage by approximately 10% during declared drought emergencies. Recommendations include adopting mitigated negative declaration IS 2116 for use permit PL 2513, also UP 2115, with the findings listed in the staff report. The major use permit recommendations include to approve major use permit PL 2513, UP 2115, with the proposed conditions of approval and with the findings listed in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Are there any questions so far on the staff report from the commission?
Yes. Good morning, everyone. I do have a few questions. In regard to... In regard to the acreage, again, with the transition of this project over the time and its scaling down, there was also in our report, as in one of our green sheets was also brought up, that there is a differing total acreage that was talked about. So in one of the green sheets, it says there was 1,246, 1,847, or in our staff report, it says 1,626, that the all-encompassing acreage involved in this project. Can you identify what the actual number is?
So the actual acreage of the project parcel's canopy is going to be the 19.6 acres within the 34-acre cultivation area. The biological assessments did include the much larger area because those were written for the project when the project was originally proposed as a much larger project.
So I think the question was exactly how big is the entire?
The proposed canopy is 19.6 acres within the 34-acre cultivation area.
Which is it within 1,600?
So is it the 1,627 total acre? Because on the staff report, it says parcel size. It's listed here, 1,620...
So that is...
1,627 acres total.
Sure. So that is the total acreage of all of the project parcels that are used for clustering as well?
Right. And so that leads to my next question. As far as what is clustering? And how does that relate to when we're looking at a project as you keep coming back at us and saying it's 19.6 acres in a 34 cultivation zone? So what's clustering? And why are we evaluating a total of 1,627 acres?
Sure. So with commercial cannabis canopy for outdoor canopy, the ratio is 20 to 1. You must have 20 acres for every one acre of outdoor cultivation. With that, density can be transferred for clustering parcels within a project so the project can meet its full amount of proposed canopy, regardless of the individual parcel size, but the collective parcel size of all project, all of the parcels included within the project.
Okay. Thank you.
So I have, that brings up a question. If this project is approved, will those clustered parcels be required to be included in this? So they won't be able to be sold?
So with that, there is a section in Article 27 that does discuss clustering and co-location of parcels. And there is a deed restriction that is required for all parcels within the project to list that the density has been transferred to this project. If there are... If one of the project parcels is sold and there's not enough acreage to support the project, that would necessitate a review or a modification of this project by this board to scale down the size of the project. So a deed restriction is required transferring the density.
Okay. Thank you. I have a question also in regard to Grange Road. The report says that Grange Road will have a secure metal gates installed. Yet Article 27 on page 118 says gates shall not be constructed across driveways or access roads that are used by neighboring properties. Can you speak to that?
Yes. That gate is existing, and it's my understanding that all those who need access through that gate do have access through that gate. We have had this issue in the past, and I did speak with former Public Works Director, Scott DeLeon, and he had stated that new gates are not to be constructed. However, if they are existing and all parcel owners do have access, it's a non-issue.
In addition to parcel owners, then, CDD staff will also have access to that gate for inspections and, of course, fire emergency vehicles?
So with that, a Knox box is required at that gate for emergency responders to have access into the site 24/7. When CDD schedules our annual inspections, we re-request gate codes at that time as well, so we have access.
Okay. Thank you. In regard to the growing season, the staff report refers to, also refers to the cultivation season, kind of uses the names, the two words interchangeably, so I'm assuming they're, they mean the same. But what... What is the growing season on this parcel? And are there two harvest periods, summer and fall? Or is it just one?
I would actually defer to the project consultant to discuss operations at the site.
Okay. Then we'll get to that.
Just, oh, go ahead. Can I just, on that same question, you said that when it's not the growing season, everything will be removed and put back to...
Original state.
Okay. Explain how that's done. How does that work?
Sure. So the membrane structures, the five, six thousand square foot drying structures, are to be erected and then completely taken down in an effort to prevent the concrete slab foundations for permanent structures. So with that, they will be tied into the ground securely and then removed once the season is completed.
Okay.
To Monica's point, is that, is there one season? Is there two seasons? Is it going to be up six months during the year? What is the cadence of that?
I would defer to the project's consultant to discuss operations.
Okay.
Okay. And then in regard to those membranes, it would have been nice if we had some photographs of what those actually, you have?
I do have a rendering of what they could potentially look like.
Okay.
Just one...
Because we've all seen, you know, different structures removed at different times of the year, yet the framework still remains and it still, you know, has a look.
Give me just one moment, I need to share the screen.
So this is the example of the membrane structure that is being proposed, and there is the proposal for five of these structures. And with that, there would need to be, in this area, some type of rack or tiering system as these structures are not load-bearing, so cannabis cannot be tied to the structure itself to be dried. So there would be internal rack systems within these structures, and then these structures would be erected and then demoed with a demolition permit each year during the growing season, or following the growing season.
And so that means that when they're removed, it looks like ground?
That is correct.
Ground?
That is correct, and they do need to be stowed and stored away, or else it would be considered a code enforcement violation for open and outdoor storage.
So would they be stowed on-site?
I anticipate that they would be, however, I would defer that question to the project consultant as well.
And were this to be approved, is the removal part of the approval?
Yes.
And who will monitor that?
The demolition permit that's issued by the Building Safety Division.
So the Building Safety Division will go out and monitor to make sure that that has happened?
Yes, the building inspector would go out to confirm and then final that permit.
That would be done on an annual basis?
Yes.
Thank you.
But, go ahead.
No.
But the other buildings and the twenty water storage tanks would remain, of course?
So the one hundred and twenty square foot storage sheds would remain, and then these buildings would be put away.
And the water tanks?
The water tanks would remain on-site as well.
One more question. It said that the area was designated agriculture, it's not prime farmland?
This area is not considered prime farmland.
Just...
In this area. It's not, it's not, sorry. This is not part of the farmland protection zone. Which would require greenhouse cannabis canopy.
Okay. Thank you.
And I have a question, and this is just a question of curiosity more so, is the cannabis waste, it says, well, where would the cannabis waste be disposed? So what is a waste disposal facility and where's that located?
Sure. So we have a couple of different options that are allowable uses. On-site cannabis vegetative waste storage does need to be secured with perimeter fencing or with wattles or completely covered. And with that, we find that most cultivators actually compost on-site and use their compost as soil amendment. However, that is not required. The other option is to chip the cannabis vegetative waste materials and use that as ground cover, which would then provide some relief from water evaporation from outdoor cultivation. Additionally, there is Quackenbush Mountain Resource Facility that does take vegetative material, and cannabis waste is one of those items that they do take there at that facility.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I also have some questions, and this may come after the applicant's presentation, but I do have some questions about the water tanks. Also, power, PG&E, and wind power is going to be provided to the property? And, yeah. I guess I would hold off on my other questions until after we hear more.
I have a question about where's the closest residence to this project?
Approximately eight hundred feet, and the requirement at this time is two hundred feet.
I think the document says a thousand feet.
Does it?
I stand corrected.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions or?
I have several questions, but I think they're more appropriate for the applicant, if the applicant is present.
Okay. So we have a presentation from the applicant? All right, we can do that now?
Good morning, members of the commission. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present our project to you. We've been diligently working on this for quite some time, and we're very grateful for this opportunity.
Just one more thing.
My name is Jim Comstock. I live at 1-9955 Grange Road, Middletown, on the site of where this project is proposed. Going to describe for a few moments our deep generational presence in Northern California agriculture. Our family roots go back to California agriculture since 1841. That's a little before even I was born. And presence in Lake County agriculture since the late 1800s. And there are four generations of my personal family working on the Middletown Ranch before this project is proposed, beginning in 1942. And ranching is a family identity for us. My father, grandfather were ranchers, and actually, two of my great-grandfathers were ranchers in this area, one in the founding families in Alexander Valley, there were the Bidwells and the Alexanders, and I come from the Bidwells. And another one in the Granville Perry Swift, one of the Bear Flag revolt gentlemen from a long, long time ago was my great-great-grandfather also. So ranching, it's not an occupation. It's a multi-generational way of life for us and for many agricultural families. I was born and raised on the ranch, raised my children there, and I live in the house that I was born and raised in. I'm seventy-five, almost seventy-six, and I've spent my entire life, with the exception of time in college and four years in the United States Navy, which I'm very proud of my service, around and on that ranch. So our roots are extremely deep. And to us, stewardship of this historical land is extremely important. Our ranch is the largest remaining family-owned parcel that is still in its original state from the Guernoc Land Grant, which was established in 1845. Surrounding ranches, most have been sold, subdivided, or developed, and we, as a family, we've remained committed to preserving our ranch as a whole as that. It's something that we take extremely seriously, and that's why we're still there. We have great pride in long, long-term stewardship of this unique and historic landscape. And there are many challenges to maintaining a ranch over such a long period of time. Agriculture has a history of adaptation as time goes by. Across the generations, the ranch has attempted many, many forms of agriculture. Originally, always cattle. There have always been cows, still are, and now, of course, will remain that way. There'll always be some cows. Walnuts, of which there are a lot in Lake County, pears, hay, and for animal crops, cattle, sheep, and ant hogs. And my dad was a very, very well-respected horse trainer here in Lake County for years and years and years. And as you all know, ranches have to evolve and adapt to survive economically. Even within the cattle operations, adaptations have to be required. We originally had Hereford cows, of which we had a commercial herd and a registered herd. Eventually, that transferred to Angus, as Hereford cattle were not as prevalent as they had used to be. And persistent economic hardships. Anyone who's been a rancher for a long time or a farmer knows that there are economic hardships in doing this. None of the agricultural options that we had produced enough revenue to cover the taxes and the insurance on a long-term basis. Ranching alone has never been financially sufficient, and always a lifetime need for second jobs to make ranch ownership possible. I always maintained a second job to do it, and you know, I was fine with that, because it took whatever it takes to keep the ranch is what I've always done and what our family's done. And excuse me if I might get a little emotional about this, because this is vitally important to our family. Well, there was a turning point. My father unfortunately died at age fifty-eight. I was quite young at the time when he died. I was twenty-eight years old. And we, as a family, faced the strong possibility of losing the ranch because of inheritance, inheritance taxes. On the day of my dad's funeral, one of my uncles was there with us, and he asked me, we were leaning over the hood of my dad's Chevy pickup, and my uncle said, "Well, you think the ranch can be kept?" And my initial belief was it seemed impossible for us to keep it. My uncle's encouragement, he said, quote, "They're not making any more land in California. Let's see what we can do." He was an attorney. He was not a rancher. Well, through incredible sacrifice, creativity, and unbelievable amounts of hard work, the ranch remains still in our family forty-seven years since my dad's passing. We're still there, and we don't plan on going anywhere. So looking ahead and trying to ensure the ranch's future, we have a desire for long-term stability. I want my children to face a future where the ranch is secure and not endangered, and this project is essential to that stability. Our commitment to minimal environmental impact has been, it's a highest priority with us, to keep the land protected and ecologically intact contact. We've rejected many more lucrative commercial and industrial development projects due to environmental harm, and we just didn't do that. Our goal has always been to sustain the ranch through responsible agriculture. Well, so why is cannabis the right choice for our ranch? There are many, many potential crops to examine. Traditional agriculture cannot financially sustain the ranch, and some of the alternative options would have probably bought more profit, would bring much greater destruction to the landscape. We ended up, after much, much thought that cannabis was the best sustainable option, provides economic viability required to preserve the ranch, allows the family, our family, to continue agricultural stewardship rather than sell or develop, which we adamantly do not want to do. This minimizes the environmental impact compared to other realistic alternatives, ensures future generations can keep our ranch intact. That is our goal. I'm old now. I have children and grandchildren participating in the ranch, and I want them to be able to continue that through many more generations. So in conclusion, our commitment to stewardship, the ranch is a cherished legacy involving over a hundred and eighty years in agriculture in California. Our family's goal, to preserve the ranch in its natural and agricultural state for generations to come. So cannabis is the project path forward. It supports both the land and our family's continued presence on it, offers sustainability environmentally and economically and historically. And we thank you for this opportunity, and we ask that you respectfully consider this and allow us to pursue this, which is a legal activity now in our county, and thank you. And do you have any questions for me?
Well, first of all, thank you so much for your presentation and giving us the history and background on the ranch and your family, so thank you for that.
Okay. Did you have a question? Is it acceptable for me to accept questions?
Yes, you can accept questions from the commission.
Yes, thank you. That was delightful. My family also came here in the mid-1800s.
Good! And you're still here.
They knew each other. I have a couple of concerns. This package was very difficult to read because there are so many additions of it. You know, it's been four years. So the things that I read might have changed, so I just wanted to clarify. I have a big concern about air quality. The property management plan mentions fugitive dust, exhaust from diesel and gas motors, but fails to mention fertilizer. Dairy manure is highly fragrant. Will the compost be disced in before covering with plastic?
These questions would be best answered by the consultant to the specifics, and when he makes his presentation, you can ask him those?
Most of my questions are of this nature, so...
Okay, probably be best for him to answer those?
Okay.
I'm an old-time farmer. He knows the specifics on some of that a lot better than I do.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
So, excuse me, just, I have a question, you know, and of course, not for you, Jim, I'm sorry, I have a question for staff, actually, in regard to this process. While I appreciate, and of course, living in a small community in Middletown, I'm very familiar with Mr. Comstock's background, the family background, but I was hoping, when you said that we had an, the applicant was giving a presentation, that we would hear information about the project itself. So, and so I guess my question is, is that forthcoming?
Yes, that is forthcoming. With staff's recommendation, it may be best to move forward with the project consultant and then hear from the other parties during public comment.
That sounds great. Just a process question. When we're on the topic, am I allowed to interrupt and ask a question? Is that...
I think it'd be best to finish the presentation, and then we'll come back for questions.
With respect, I'm okay with that. I appreciate it. I sometimes get nervous, and if I have a little bit of a dialogue, it helps me, but it's your choice, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, we'll just run through the presentation, and then we'll do questions at the end.
Sorry, we just, I'm sorry, my name is Trey Sherrill. I'm the consultant for this project. So I wanted to, I want to start out by saying that it's been a, I've been very grateful to have worked with the Comstocks over the last four years. I'm grateful for this opportunity to present this project to you this morning, and thank you for your time and consideration. Could we go to the next slide, please? So this is the Comstock Ranch, and I know there was some discussion about the acreage of the ranch. So the parcels that were associated with the application are all on the south side of Puta Creek. There's one more parcel on the north side of Puta Creek that's included in this image here that is also part of their ranch, and that's the discrepancy on the acreage here from what's in your application. This just shows, you know, where the thirty-four acres, where the project will be located in respect to the ranch overall. Next slide, please. So as we started out, another discrepancy was like seventy-four something acreage. So as we started out, another discrepancy was like 74 something acres. That was the overall cultivation area with 61 and a half acres of canopy. That was the original application. We, as mentioned, we've reduced it several times through this process. We got rid of the field to the west there, because that field is somewhat visible from residences in the Hidden Valley Lake community. And so that was the first one we got rid of. And then we started chipping away at the, the field to the right till we got to our current proposal today. Next slide, please. So, uh-oh, I got turned. Okay. Well, this, this image is supposed to show distances to the, it's over 700, the cultivation area is over 700 feet from Poota Creek, over 200 feet, 250 feet from the nearest property lines, and over 800 feet from the nearest neighboring residence. Next slide, please. So this is a list of concerns that have been repeatedly brought up from a neighbor, the owners of a neighboring ranch. And so I thought they made a good outline of just the concerns to address. Groundwater availability and well interference. We have the hydrogeologist that has been working with us on this project here, and he's going to come up and talk at the end. And so I'm going to skip over that one for right now, and then I'll, you know, start out with wildfire evacuation, emergency access, and then go on from there. Next slide, please. So this is an image. There'll be four images, wildfire evacuation, emergency access. The access road to the property is paved. It's about 15 to 16 feet wide, the paved surface. And so, and we do propose some improvements to that road. There was a question, there was a topic brought up about the gate. We do intend to improve that existing gate, because that gate is about 14 feet wide right now, to bring it to 20. The Article 27 item you brought up, that's about not, the cultivation area or gates, controlling access to the cultivation area could not prevent access, cannot prevent people from accessing their property. This is, this, this gate right here is, is not used, it's used to access the cultivation area, but it's, the cultivation area is far from here, and it, and there's, there's other branches off of that road. So that's, the gate, there will be gates there, but there are no properties beyond the cultivation area. So yes, we propose improvements to the existing gate, improvements to the road. As the bottom right corner, you can see where this is like one of the areas where the paved surface is only like 15 feet wide, because it's starting to crumble on the shoulder. So these are, these are improvements that would need to be, that need to be conducted to, to adhere to 4290 emergency vehicle access compliance. Next slide, please. So we're referring to the proposed harvest storage and staging areas. There, there, there are two things. We, they, they're areas as well, like areas on the ground as well as proposed tents. We have to meet these three conditions as well as, before even issuing the building permit, the, the building permit application will have to be reviewed and signed off by the Planning Division, Environmental Health Department, Special Districts, Department of Public Works, the South Lake County Fire Protection District, and the Middletown Unified School District with mitigation fees paid to the latter. So it's not, not only do we have to meet these requirements, but then we have to jump through extra hoops. So probably for the first year, maybe multiple years of operation, those structures would not be up. All processing would occur off-site during that, that time. Their plants would be harvested and transported directly to a processing facility. And then, next, next slide, please. So one of the other issues that were brought up repeatedly is concerns with pesticide drift and conflicts with adjacent organic farmland. Six pesticides are proposed for use on this project. Five of the six are Organic Materials Research Institute listed, OMRI. And the one, next slide, please. The one pesticide that is not OMRI-listed is this green cleaner, which is, which uses organic soybean oil. But the reason it's not certified organic, because it uses sodium laural sulfate, which is a surfactant in this case. But sodium laural sulfate is a surfactant widely used in personal care products such as shampoos, body washes, and toothpaste, and as an emulsifier or thickener in certain foods such as marshmallows and dried egg products. And then, remember, the, the cultivation area is over 250 feet from the neighboring organic property. So the chance, A, these, these pesticides, there's no chance that they would contaminate the certified organic pasture because of the distances. But the products themselves pose no risk. Next slide. Here, so I, concerned, I took this issue very seriously, and I spoke to people at the Lake County Department of Agriculture, the California State Organic Program, and the USDA National Organic Program. And they all, it was, my purpose of talking there was trying to find out, could, could any of these products potentially harm the, the organic certification neighboring property? And they all came back to me, it's like, it's not a valid argument, and this is why. They, every one of them pointed me here. And the example that was used is if you have organic walnut orchard, and your neighbor is not, it's not your neighbor's responsibility not to contaminate yours. It's your responsibility to provide a buffer from your neighbor. Not that, I want, I want to be clear. There's, I don't believe there's any chance whatsoever that any pesticide could ever drift over onto the neighbor's property. But this was like, I, I felt like it was necessary to bring this up, because every, all three of these agencies were like, this is just not a valid point. Next slide, please. So farmland protection zone inequities. We do have the Comstock's attorney, Tim Cassuni, in the, in the Zoom room, who wants to make a comment on this. But I just want to make a quick statement. There's a, there's a little dot at the bottom right. That's the proposed cultivation area. As you can see, is very far from the four farmland protection zones that were established via ordinance 3101, which was unanimously passed by the Lake County Board of Supervisors on December 15, 2020. For, and the Rancho Lake application was submitted in 2021 after the farmland protection zones were established. Additionally, changes to the farmland protection zones were considered by the Lake County Board of Supervisors on July 8th of this year, but the majority of supervisors had no interest in revisiting or expanding the farmland protection zones. Okay, and with that, if we could please allow Mr. Cassuni to speak on this issue?
Do we see him there on Zoom? All right. Please state your first and last name.
Yes, Timothy Cassuni. Can everybody hear me? Okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, great. Yeah, my name's Timothy Cassuni. I'm with the firm Cassuni Law in Sacramento. I have been retained by Rancho Lake LLC. Just a few comments on the issue of farmland protection zones. I was in receipt of a letter dated November 11th, 2025, from Peter Lucetti. To the extent that is considered part of the record, I did a formal response to that letter and sent it to Ms. Claybon on December 8th. So my response should be in the record. I'm not going to read the letter, but the gist of it is that it appears to be that Mr. Lucetti is somehow seeking an amendment to the farmland protection zone to somehow include his property. And therefore, because, I suppose, if it's approved for inclusion of Mr. Lucetti's property, somehow the project should be denied. There's several procedural substantive problems with that. First of all, that kind of an amendment, it requires a dedicated agendized hearing before the commission, an ultimate approval before the board. None of that was done. There's no separate agenda item for consideration of an amendment to the farmland protection zone. And I'm, furthermore, even assuming that there was an amendment, this, this project has been grandfathered, the application has been deemed complete, and it would not apply retroactively. Third, as Trey mentioned a few minutes ago, on July 8th, 2025, there was an agendized hearing before the board on the issue of consideration of a summary of cannabis policy recommendations. There was a letter submitted on the issue of amendment to the farmland protection zones. That was shot down very quickly and precisely by the board, to the extent that the planning commissioners want to look into that. If you look at hour six, at six hours, 2 minutes, 50 seconds, there's an express statement by one of the, the chair of the board stating, quote, "There is no interest in looking at farmland protection zones again." So that would be the extent of my comments on this. This planning commission has no authority currently in consideration of Rancho Lake's project to be even thinking about an amendment to a farmland protection zone. It is not agendized, and it has already been shot down by the, by the board last July. Be happy to answer any further questions any of the commissioners might have on this issue, but that would be the extent of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Are there any questions regarding this issue from the commission?
I don't have questions, but I have comments if we're going to open up FPZ discussion.
I don't think it's, yeah, I don't think it's part of the project or anything to do with it.
So to that point, I would say that everything we just heard is somewhat irrelevant.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Now, next slide, please. Addressing cannabis odor emissions, this is a, this is a modeling, a graph for modeling that was, it's odor concentration versus distance. It was originally conducted for the Yellow County Cannabis Ordinance Environmental Impact Report. This version was adapted and incorporated into this, into Sonoma County's Cannabis Ordinance Environmental Impact Report. Basically, the purpose of showing it is just that odor intensity declines with distance, with normal atmospheric dispersion and dilution, with the greatest reduction in odor concentration occurring in the first 500 feet from the source. Next slide, please. And I bet this, yeah, again, sorry, this is, what was showing here is that, you know, we're all aware that cannabis cultivation can generate objectionable odors when the plants are mature or flowering in the cultivation areas or when being processed after harvest. And those significant odor impacts are anticipated from the proposed cultivation operation due to the generous setbacks provided from property lines, neighboring residences, and outdoor activity areas. In this case, the proposed cultivation area is located well over 1,000 feet from the nearest neighboring primary residence and over 800 feet from the secondary residence on the neighboring property. Additionally, most, if not all, processing activities will occur off-site within a California licensed processing facility. Next slide, please. So now we're, we're getting into the groundwater availability and well interference topic. I call this the Comstock-Lucetti sub watershed. But basically, if you can see, there's a collection, there's a series of streams that flow generally north into Poota Creek. And all of, in the mountains that surround these two, that are all a part of these two ranches and surround them, basically force all water through the two ranches. Excuse me. As of right now, there is one dominant existing water user in the sub watershed. The 110 acres of irrigated pasture that uses over 104 million gallons of water per year. There are also three residences within the sub watershed estimated to each use approximately 163,000 gallons per year. Next slide, please. The proposed cultivation operation would increase water usage within the sub watershed by, excuse, excuse me, by approximately 16 million gallons per year, which is a 15% increase to what is already being used in the watershed. The existing and proposed water usage is less than the estimated groundwater recharge during severe drought years for the Comstock Ranch alone. That doesn't even take into account the over, I believe it's over 500 acres of the Lucetti, or 276 Ranch. I'll give you a. And if it's okay, I'm willing to answer any questions about water usage at this time.
I have a question on your, your, the odor. What are the mitigating? Thank you. What are the mitigating processes that you're going to employ to make sure that that's contained?
Well, it's just, you know, atmospheric dispersion. Yeah, just distance and dispersion. The, we located the proposed drying facilities on the opposite, like away from the neighboring ranch. So that, so those would be, aside from just, you know, atmospheric, you know, put odor generated from plants being out in the field, more odor is generated when it's concentrated in a building and then released. And so we've put that as far away. So those, those areas would be well over 1,000 feet from the, from the neighboring residences. Does that make sense? I can, there's another study that was done for the Yellow County.
So you're relying on just distance to mitigate the, the odor, no, no other sort of mechanical?
Outdoor cultivation.
Filtrations or any of that kind of thing?
It's not practical for just plants out in the field.
Oh, no, no, I meant for your.
Oh, for the building?
Yeah.
Oh, no, it would, it would have carbon filtration as well.
Oh, it does, okay.
Yes. Yeah.
Sorry, didn't ask the question clearly.
I misunderstood.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. The, so maybe the, that chart showed basically a 76% decline in odor concentration over 500 feet. That's what that, that chart was for, that, basically, Yellow County, Sonoma County, when they reviewed that modeling, they determined like 500 feet is enough distance to reduce like the odors to less than substantial, is how, you know, how things are worded for secret compliance. Dang, another one that got turned. So I'm, I'm going to present a chart here. I just wanted to like show you where the data comes from. The data comes from the Hidden Valley Lake Community Service District Coyote Valley Groundwater Basin Monitoring Reports. Next slide, please. Also including these reports are the water rights reports from the neighboring ranch. As mentioned in their letters, they have a senior water right, which allows them to take 320 acre feet, over 320 acre feet from Poota Creek each year. Some years, like in, some of my notes, 2018, they self-reported that all of the water came from Poota Creek. And other years, as they reported in 2022, all of the water came from their, their wells on site. And it's my understanding, based on conversations, that their diversion facility, the facility that takes the water out of Poota Creek, when the creek is low during drought years, it doesn't function correctly, or it doesn't function adequately enough. And so therefore, they switch to well water. But I just want to show where this, this information comes from on the next slide. There's a chart. And to me, this, this chart summarizes the water in this sub watershed I described earlier. There's, there are two monitoring wells that the Hidden Valley Lake Community Services District monitors every month, and they have been doing so since 1998. And, and then, so that's the, the orange and the green, and that shows, and as the hydrogeologist will talk about later, you see the two wells, they, one's shallow, one's deep, and they move together and sink, which is indicative of an unconfined aquifer. The yellow bars indicate periods of drought. These are declared periods of drought. If you will notice that during periods of drought, the groundwater level goes down, right? The lows, the lowest lows are during the periods of drought, and the highest highs are during, when there is no drought, which is exactly what we would expect. But the, I'm sorry.
So this is over the last 26 years?
Yes, ma'am. And then the gray bars are the water, the water that's extracted from the well based on those water rights reports. And you can see, you know, when it's a drought, the gray bars are, are there to begin with. And, and so the taller the bar, the more water is taken out of the groundwater, more out of the well. And so therefore, the water level drops. It's exactly what we would expect. But the water levels still stay between 930 and 915 feet of elevation. Like, we're talking about 15 feet difference here in fluctuation, which is a very small amount. Um, and then the blue line, that is a trend line applied to one of the monitoring wells. And you see, it's just, there's actually just barely an upward trend here, um, as far as water use. Even though this, this amount of water, you know, two hundred and thirty, I'm sorry, three hundred and twenty acre feet are taken out of the aquifer some years, there's still an upward trend of, at the monitoring well at this location. Alright, next slide, please. Alright, this one is trying to show, uh, some things got a little squirrely there too, but, uh, this, so we were supposed to have a hearing on May ninth, twenty twenty-four. But, uh, the neighboring ranch said that they were experiencing shortages of water. And so that, uh, and so they were going to have GHD conduct a groundwater study from May to November of twenty twenty-four and produce the report. And the next slide. So we, I, I asked, um, all this year, I had asked staff if they had received a report, because we, that's what we were waiting for, like that. We were supposed to have this hearing at the beginning of last year, it didn't happen, and that was the reason why. So we're like, okay, we're waiting, we're waiting for this one. Um, I kept asking, uh, staff said, we have not received a report. So we went and we're like, okay, we'll take the concerns that were voiced in that GHD letter that caused the delay. And we'll, we'll try to address them ourselves. And so on the left is the, the technical memorandum and the response to comments letter. And then after we've produced that, um, we received the letter on the right, it was dated May ninth. And so I assume that that's when it was produced, but it wasn't available to us at the time, and so that's why we did what we did. Next slide, please. So, um, they, they called the, they called it the Lucetti Ranch Hydrologic Well Assessment. And it, and it contained a couple of omissions, which I believe led to some flawed analysis. And so a couple of things, if you see the chart at the right, um, there, they imply that this is the same groundwater well where we, where I presented that data from, uh, so the monitoring well where I presented the data from earlier. But as I'll show you, that well did not exist until twenty, uh, until nineteen ninety-eight, uh, which they admit there. But then at the top, they say, you know, monitor well A B has been monitored dating back to nineteen fifties. That's a different well at a different location. And to, to compare them, it gives the impression that groundwater has been going down from, since the nineteen fifties. But it's a different well, a different location, most likely closer to Poota Creek. And so the depth of water would be higher because the ground would be lower at that location. So that, I, I feel like that was misleading. But then, um, the, the reason I think that the omissions were intentional, and I'll show why, uh, because it was not convenient to the narrative. So, uh, they state that, um, you know, down here, the, to obtain well construction information identifying nearby offsite wells, the Department of Water Resources, DWR, Well Completion Report Database was reviewed. Ag one and Ag two well completion reports were obtained from DWR database. While monitoring well A B was not likely due to its construction predating the submission requirement, no well completion report was identified for the Lucetti Onsite Domestic Well. Um, and they also go on to say that they couldn't find the well report for the project well. So project well, well report and the, uh, it was included in our, in our reports that they reviewed and wrote this, um, paper in response to. Next slide. The monitoring well reports are included in the Hidden Valley Lake Community Services District Monitoring. Every year, they're included in that report. Next slide, please. And this is, just shows you, this is the DWR, um, well report, uh, website. This is the geographic information, one, they have, they have two. Um, and they have the, that R well, the project well, right there, you know, and then, next slide. And then here, this is, this is from the database, they say they went through and it was created, you know, this was in there. I, I pulled this the day, so I received their report on a Friday, on Monday, I went in and pulled it and it was right there. And it was created in twenty, you know, December twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, so it's always there. That's the reason why I believe, you know, it was, it was inconvenient if, and the reason why, excuse me. The reason why I, I believe it was omitted is because if, if they'd had the, if they'd analyzed the reports, they would have to come to the conclusion, as we did, that this is an unconfined aquifer. And if that, if that was the case, then, um, they would have to, um, they would have to admit that the calculations we use that show no interference or negligible interference, um, between the project well and the neighboring wells. So they, because of, the calculations used for an unconfined aquifer. But because they didn't have the, well, I think because they didn't have these, they use calculations for confined aquifer, which result in a greater radius of influence, greater radius of well interference. And, and therefore, I believe that was, they chose to do it in that way, because that was the only way to show theoretically some kind of impact from our well and the neighboring wells. Uh, next slide, please. So, but one of the things that was really useful in the study that was that, um, Lucetti Ranch Hydrologic Well Assessment was the, the test that they performed. So they had, they had, there's two wells on the Lucetti Ranch. One of them, Agwell one, uh, that's the well that's about five hundred feet from the project well. Another well, um, Agwell two, it's about five hundred and fifty feet from Agwell one on the Lucetti Ranch. They pumped Agwell two at six hundred and fifty gallons a minute for eighty-two days. It wasn't quite continuous, but it was, it was almost continuous throughout. There were, there were some periods where they, they shut up and not for a long period of time. And over that period of time, you know, they pumped more than four times the amount of water in eighty-two days than we will use, that our project will use in a hundred and eighty days. So four times more in eighty-two versus, versus, um, our project in a hundred and eighty. And what, the reason I'm bringing that up is even, even with such strong pumping, it had a less than two-foot impact on, on Agwell one. Like the water level on Agwell one dropped less than two feet, even though they pumped so much over such a short period of time. And, and they're, these are all in the same unconfined aquifer, all these wells. And so that just like, that proved the analysis that we had performed before, that there's no way that the pumping rates. For, once again, over four times more, it only went down one point seven feet. The water storage for our project is a hundred thousand gallons, you know, I, it's not even, you know, it's not even a hundredth of what was pumped. And then also, so one point seven feet, even with such extreme measures were taken, all of the wells on the project property and the neighboring ranch are over a hundred feet deep. So it's just a very insignificant, um, uh, impact. And with that, uh, next slide, please. And, haha, uh, well, this is, uh, shows where, where these wells are. Once again, the project well, five hundred feet from Agwell one, five, uh, Agwell one, five hundred and fifty feet from Agwell two. I don't remember off the top of my head what, uh, the Lucetti Ranch Domestic Well and the monitoring well distances are, but they're over five hundred feet. Our, our modeling said that there would be no, no impact or an unusual impact, and this test proved it. And to elaborate a little bit more on that is the hydrogeologist that we had help us, um, work on this project.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Lee Hervitz and I'm a certified hydrogeologist and the president of Hervitz Environmental Services. I prepared the hydrogeologic assessment report and the technical memorandum for this project. Today, I just wanted to give you a brief summary of our assessment and the findings, starting with the regional groundwater conditions. The site's located in the Coyote Valley Groundwater Basin, which has been designated by the Department of Water Resources as a very low priority groundwater basin. And long-term monitoring in this area has shown stable water levels. Uh, seasonal fluctuations do occur, but the aquifer reliably recovers each wet season, including after the recent droughts. And overall, the data has shown that it is a resilient and sustainable groundwater system. In twenty twenty, the State Water Resource Control Board determined that the groundwater in this basin is not part of a subterranean stream. That means that groundwater extraction here does not require a state water board water right and claims of material injury only apply if pumping measurably affects stream flow. Our analysis showed no measurable effect on stream flow in Poota Creek. For assessing well capacity and the potential for well interference, we use both field data and modeling in our evaluation. A well yield test was performed at the site in July of twenty twenty-one, which represented a controlled dry season test during a drought year. The project well was pumped at three hundred and fifty-five gallons a minute for six hours and produced over one hundred and forty-five thousand gallons during the test. This is sixty-six percent more than the site's peak daily groundwater demand and almost double its average daily demand. The water levels in the well also recovered to seventy-three percent of its pre-test water level in just forty minutes after pumping had stopped. The well testing showed that the well and the aquifer are more than capable of meeting the site's water demand and that aquifer recovery is rapid.
Can I just ask a question since you're on this page?
Yeah.
Um, I, I think this is the, the well test that I had a question about.
Yeah.
Um, I'm looking at it on your, um, property management plan, and it says that the total drawdown was one hundred thirteen feet during this test? Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
This was the well test on February eleventh, twenty twenty-one?
No, this test was done in July sixth, twenty twenty-one. I think there was two, might have been two well tests.
Okay, this was, um. Well, this was in the management report and it concerned me because that's a significant.
I believe the drawdown was thirty-seven feet in the test well at the time.
Okay, and the one in our package, it says total drawdown one hundred thirteen feet.
What was that, what was that date again?
Uh, February eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Well owner, James Comstock. Well location, one nine nine five five Grange Road. It has the longitude and latitude.
So you have a pumping rate, I'm just curious.
Um, it says water level twenty-two feet, estimated yield three hundred gallons per minute, test type airlift.
Yeah, that wasn't, that, oh, airlift, and that, that might have been during the installation, uh, potentially. Because when you do an airlift test, they, they pump, they put air down, they put an air pipe down to the bottom of the well and they blow out, they put high-pressure air in there and it just places all the water in the well. So when you do an airlift test, it, it takes out, it's considered a hundred percent drawdown test.
Oh, okay, that would explain it. It says total depth of boring a hundred sixty feet and total depth of completed well a hundred forty feet.
Yeah, so they probably have the air pipe down at a hundred and forty feet.
Well, perhaps Mr. Comstock could answer when the well was dug. I mean.
I can give you that, I have the.
Yes. The exact dates, I think it's January of twenty twenty-one.
Well, that would explain it, okay, thanks. I, I mean, that's concerning, thank you.
Are you talking about the?
All of the exact data.
The well completion report?
January twenty, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
So, yeah, then this was more of a control test to try to get to the wells, figure out what the well's capacity was, it was sustainable. And so you get, try to get a controlled, uh, drawdown. Okay.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Chair, if we're going to ask questions during the presentation, I do have a lot of questions about that analysis. So, or should we wait till after he finishes?
Trey, after the hydrologist completes his assessment, are there more, um, topics that you're going to be hitting on?
Uh, no, I had two more slides, but I can cut those and, and we can.
Okay, we'll do questions after the hydrology report is done.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, we said the water levels in the well also recovered to seventy-three percent of the pre-test water level in just forty minutes after pumping. The well testing showed that the well and the aquifer are more than capable of meeting the site's water demand and that the aquifer recovery is rapid. For the long-term assessment of well interference, we use the TICE analytical method, which requires a pump, a constant pumping rate when you're doing that equation. So we use the average seasonal rate of sixty-point-five gallons per minute over the entire one hundred and eighty-day dry season. This is intentionally conservative and represents the average pumping rate if pumping was continuous during the entire season. In reality, the well is going to pump for short intervals, roughly three and a half hours a day, um, not continuously. And since we know the well recovers very quickly, the actual drawdown will be smaller and shorter-lived than the TICE model predicted. However, our modeling showed that less than three percent drawdown would be expected in the nearest neighboring well, which is far below the ten percent threshold typically used to define an adverse effect. To put this in context, the GHD transducer study conducted on the neighboring property provided real-world data that aligns with our modeling. In that study, pumping of one of their wells at approximately six hundred and fifty gallons a minute for eighty-two consecutive days resulted in only one point seven feet of drawdown in a well about five hundred feet away. And the aquifer recovered ninety-five percent within three hours after pumping stopped. These measurements directly support our TICE model and confirm the aquifer's rapid responsiveness and limited well interference. We've also reviewed some public comments about the water and the wells in the area, as well as some feedback on our report from GHD. And I'd like to briefly address a few of those comments today. Um, we have heard that wells are shutting off, that the neighbors' wells shut off during heavy pumping and that this is a proof of aquifer stress. And it's our opinion that the well has shut-off events that have been reported are best explained by well performance limitations and not by aquifer stress. The GHD, GHD transducer study shows that groundwater levels recover rapidly after pumping, which is the opposite of what you would expect to see in a stressed aquifer. Pump shut-offs are very common in older agricultural wells, where issues such as screen fouling, internal friction losses, pump wear, and overall well efficiency can limit performance. In a different, in addition, differences in well construction, such as screen length, casing diameter, completion depth, and pump settings can cause nearby wells in the same aquifer to behave very differently. And the rapid recovery observed in their data makes it clear that these shut-offs reflect well performance issues and not regional groundwater depletion. Another claim that, that we have, or a comment that we have heard is that the aquifer is confined and therefore the TICE model that we used wasn't appropriate for measuring long-term drawdown. But we reviewed regional data and local monitoring wells, as, as Trey mentioned, and it showed that the shallow and deeper screened wells behave similarly and that the water levels rise and fall together. This indicates an unconfined to a leaky, unconfined aquifer. And therefore, the TICE model that we used is appropriate and is widely accepted in this type of alluvial setting. Uh, we had one other comment that the, the project test well, uh, the project well test was not done during the dry season. And there was some typographical error in the J and K well yield test that said it was performed in March of twenty twenty-one, when in fact it was July sixth, twenty twenty-one. If you look further into the data, it's clear that that is the correct date and that the March date was just a typo on the front page of the report. So the test was done during the dry season during a drought year and is representative of those conditions. Uh, in conclusion, every line of evidence, the pump test, our modeling, the decades of monitoring data, and the GHD transducer study point to the same conclusion. The project's groundwater use is sustainable and will not cause significant adverse effects to neighboring wells, water rights, or the regional aquifer system. And from a hydrogeologic perspective, this project fits well within the physical capacity of the aquifer and the long-term behavior we observe in the basin. Thank you, and I'm available if you have any questions.
I have a question. So. Will you plan on using the well twenty-four seven throughout the growing season? So what will your hours of irrigation be?
Uh, well, so there, we would be pumping to storage, so irrigation could occur over twelve hours a day, but pumping to, pumping to the tanks would occur between four and maybe eight hours a day at the most.
Okay, that solves a lot of problems because I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about how your drawdown, it might go below the, the well of your neighbor. And if you just limit your use to a certain number of hours and communicate with your neighbor, the problem solved.
Yeah, and that's actually, um, I, I know I said I'd cut the last two slides, but the next slide actually touches on that. It's like, e- even in the GHD, the, the transducer study, um, you know, they say that, you know, they, they basically had to calibrate for our, you know, the forty, forty-one, forty-nine-point-one acre feet. And so it goes to an average pumping rate of, so theoretically thirty gallons per minute, twenty-four hours a day. And there, they, they even say it'd be less than a foot of interference. And then just since we have the slide up, they, they even indicate, you know, they, they say, drawdown in the Lucetti pumping agricultural wells is in excess of their specific capacity. Translation, they pump the wells too hard and that's the reason why they, they experience well shut-offs. And even, even the study that was performed for, for that two seven six ranch. ranch concluded that.
Just a note on that, I don't think it's appropriate for us to evaluate that without Luquette's contribution, but I don't think it's really relevant to my decision, so, thank you.
Ready for questions?
Well, I, I have questions. I mean, if we're going to dive into this before, before finishing the overall applicant's presentation.
That's it.
But in regard to, uh, what the hydrologist shared with us, in regard to a study, or I mean, a test that's done in early July, um, and that's early July, it's not late July, the test was done in early July for only six hours, um, has there been a test done at the end of the season, September, October, or now November, November, um, to, at a longer test, test time period to see, to check the performance of the well after we've gone through a season?
Uh, we have not, we have not done any additional tests, but to clarify, there is no, the well is not being used, it's, it's set static, so we wouldn't expect other than seasonal variability, and then I'm going to ask Lee to explain why the test done, even at the beginning of July, was sufficient for these purposes.
Okay, uh, before, before that, okay, so let me, because there's, I kind of feel like this is kind of going back and forth, and I, you know, again, being from the Middletown area, um, I understand, you know, we have, what we have here is, we've got, uh, we have property and property owners, and that, you know, we talk about communication, um, with the well as we move forward in use of it, that communication line needs to be open, and I don't know that it's been open, uh, with this, this process, so part of this is kind of like, uh, going back and forth, studying each other's things, and so I want to like, pull this back, I'm not really looking at, I do believe from all the analysis, um, that there is adequate water in the area. My main concern and my questions actually have to do with Poota Creek and the impact and effect of this well on Poota Creek, and nowhere in this material does it tell me how far this, this well, because we also have a situation in, as we review cannabis projects, um, I believe ha, as has been discussed in this particular project, is, is the well went in before, of course, the well is currently installed, and so it's considered to be an existing well on the property. It has not, as you've just stated, the well has not been used. The well is basically, the specific use, I think we all can agree, is for this upcoming, possibly, you know, approval, proposed cannabis project. So we don't really know exactly the performance of this well, as you just said, too, we can't, we haven't done a test, the, the well hasn't been used as it's proposed to be used, but also within all of this information, because it's not part of the project, it hasn't been something that's really talked about, how far is that from Poota Creek? And Poota Creek is a public resource, and that's kind of where my concern lies, is what is that potential impact on Poota Creek?
Um, the, the, uh, the impacts to Poota Creek were, they're analyzed, um, potential impacts to streams and neighboring wells was, um, analyzed in section five of the hydrogeologic assessment report. As previously mentioned, they were determined to be negligible. Um, the, and then on.
By what analysis was that determination to be negligible?
You mind speaking of that?
A six-hour test in July, I don't know if that.
Sure. Well, well, July, July fifteenth is typically considered the start of the dry season.
Correct.
So July sixth is a week early, but it was a drought year, so I would, I would argue that that, that would probably still be considered a, um, dry season test. Six hours is long enough to show that the well could make the, supply the water that was necessary for the project, um, as far as almost double the average daily water supply.
I don't contest that.
So, so that's the value of that test, and it also, with the six-hour test, we're able to perform a radius of pumping influence analysis, and the radius of pumping influence, I don't have it on the top of my head, it was like two hundred and.
Two hundred feet?
Two hundred and something feet, which was about the distance to Poota Creek, so there was, it was, it was right there where the pumping radius would get to about Poota Creek, and that was based on a six-hour pump test, but in reality, pumping was going to be three and a half, four hours a day, so we felt like the impacts were negligible.
And how far is that well from Poota Creek?
It's right at that boundary of the distance.
Two thirty.
Two hundred and thirty feet?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, I'm sorry, so in your report, you also, because I always look at the disclaimers also, um, so the groundwater systems in Lake County, this is from, from the report, that the groundwater systems in Lake County are typically complex and available data rarely allows for more than a general assessment of groundwater conditions and delineations of aquifers. The report goes on to say that the analysis is based on limited available data and relies significantly on interpretation of data that from, that is from disparate sources and disparate quality. So, so again, that doesn't leave me in a comfortable zone of knowing exactly what that, those potential impacts are to Poota Creek.
Okay, I understand. That's just our legal disclaimer, by the way, that's.
Yes.
Standard boilerplate for every single report we do in every county.
Nonetheless, it's there.
It's a protection of liability for our.
I understand, but it doesn't leave me in a field.
The, the, the report itself, I think, speaks for itself, and, and what I said about the radius of pumping influence and the distance to Poota Creek and the length of the test and the length of the expected pumping for the project, I think, answers the question.
Just a, just a point, very recently, um, this conversation has happened in the Big Valley area about the pumping and the effects on the various waterways, uh, this is primarily with, with the hitch spawning, and there was no reliable data, in fact, the, um, state of California was trying to gather data, so there's, the, the relationship between pumping and the effect on the, on the, the waterways, the streams, the creeks, has really not been quantified.
There are, there are ways to do quanti, to quantify stream depletion, um, from pumping, and it, it's, it's complicated and it relies upon relying on stream flow, stream gauge data, and, um, we also did an assessment for, we did a stream flow assessment in our report that also talked about, there's various methods for evaluating stream flow, there's, there's quantitatively to try to figure out what cubic feet per second we're going to have a reduction in stream flow after a period of time, but there's also a way to do it that evaluates the stream flow reduction in the, and puts it in, frames it in a perspective of how is that going to affect the ecology or fish and wildlife? And so we did that latter one in our report, and we found that there would be a negligible effect on, negligible effect on, on aquatic life.
I have a question. What is the CFS of Poota Creek at that time of year? Does anyone happen to know? At that nearby location?
What time of year? Because I mean, there, there's, the USGS has a gauging station, it's not that far from there, I believe it's upstream a bit.
Just roughly.
Maybe a mile, it varies month to month.
Are we talking five hundred, twenty-five hundred?
No.
Um, while he's looking that up, maybe you can answer this question. What's the elevation difference between the pumping, where the, the project's going to be and Poota Creek? How much lower in elevation is Poota Creek? Do we know those things?
I believe it's fifteen, twenty feet.
Yeah, fifteen, fifteen, twenty feet is elevation from the ground surface to like the bottom of Poota Creek. The well, the project well, um, was screened, I'm trying to find that right now, um, it is screened between sixty and a hundred and twenty feet. So, so Poota Creek, so from ground surface, Poota Creek's twenty feet below that. The, the well is cased sixty feet and then screened sixty feet.
Okay. Um, thank you. I, I think this is a really important issue, but I under, I have a good grasp of the size of this project, I'm a farmer myself. In fact, um, to Sharon's comment about the Big Valley water, one of the things that I noticed was when my neighbor upstream irrigated, and this is when pair farmers were flood irrigating, the creek ran, which means that the water was going down and spreading over to the surface that was twelve feet below. Do you understand what I'm saying? Now, we have different soils in Big Valley. There's clay, and I think that it's ancient lake bed, so it creates a barrier.
Yeah.
So there are so many issues here, um, but what I think is important to consider is the size of this project in relation to the size of Poota Creek. Do you understand what I'm saying? The volume.
And that's what I'm trying to get to, like, what it is right now, the CFS. It's, it's dropped.
Yes, and I would think, um, that also, you know, again, from living here in the area and from paying attention to waterways as well, is that the Poota Creek, the flow in Poota Creek is, is considerably different in July than it is at the end of the season. So, um, I mean, we run into that, I too am a farmer and rely on water, and, uh, at the beginning in July, we still have ample water, um, so in October, so when we come to harvest for the grapes, we, not so much.
So I have a question, does, does Poota Creek ever dry up at this location?
I'd have to defer to the Comstocks for that.
Okay.
Hey, Jim?
Yeah?
Uh, does, does Poota Creek ever dry up at your property?
The surface of it does.
But it's, it's.
Traditionally, it has.
Okay.
Forever. There's the USGS gauge, and there's the Guenot gauge that gives the stream flow, it's been there forever.
Yeah, I'm trying to, but all I'm getting right, I'm trying to get the CFS, but all I'm getting is the, the stream flow height, yeah, so I don't have time to get it.
And we can come back and discuss this, you can take some time, so, because we still have a long way to go to finish the presentation and to go through public comment, um, so perhaps you can look up that information and, and we can revisit.
Yeah, um, I'd just like to say that my concerns have been laid, I don't feel like the size of a project is going to have a significant impact on, but that's just my, my guess, my, from what I'm understanding here, the distances, my experience.
Sorry, um, just wanted to say that, that with cannabis irrigation, yes, there's a sign, uh, you know, the peak of irrigation season is in like July, August, September, but when the stream is at its lowest in October, we're not, we're not irrigating heavily because then, because that's when the time where you want to prevent mold and, and you want to reduce moisture in the plant.
And presumably, nobody else is depending on the water in Poota Creek at that time because naturally it's not there.
Yeah.
That's, that was my concern.
Are there any other questions or?
I have questions in regard to the tanks, so that we have a well that's very high-performing, and this is, this is kind of a general, you know, for me in understanding as far as the cannabis operation as well, but, um, we have moved to using tanks, you know, all cannabis operations has just become, you know, kind of natural that, that, you know, we have twenty-five-thousand-gallon tanks on a property, which never happened before, and I'm going to give just a brief, brief story, because I, I did serve as planning commissioner, uh, once in a, quite a few years back, and, um, I remember we had a project, we had a housing project coming before us in Lakeport, and, um, somebody wanted to subdivide their property and put housing on their pro, property, but because it was an area in Lakeport where there was, where water was, was somewhat scarce, they wanted to put in a holding tank, much like these holding tanks that we're using for cannabis now, and we actually denied that project then because the thought was, you know, if you've got to have a holding tank for water, then there actually is not enough water resource there to provide for the project, hence the project was denied. Um, but yet now we're in a different time, different crop, um, and we're moving forward and we're putting, like I said, twenty thousand, five thousand gallon tanks on a parcel, and so my question is, 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 we have a high-performing well that you don't plan to, to use for many hours, you said three to four hours, uh, during irrigation, why so much storage? And why not, as other farming practices, use ponds?
I'm glad you asked that. Well, to start with, for ponds, we would have to do off-site water storage ponds, they're, they're generally discouraged from fish and wildlife on the waterboard. Water storage, however, is generally encouraged, um, and, and that's to reduce impacts. And then, uh, the reason why is to have consistent, you want to have a large volume of water stored, and so you can sip water out your well, store it in your tanks, and then have pressure to get, to get to all, because we use drip irrigation, and so drip irrigation requires pressure even all the way out to the very end, or else the, or else the plants that are furthest from the water will not get enough, while the plants that are closest will get too much. And so this is a, this is a management technique that we've developed to, to conserve water resources and to effectively distribute the water.
Right, and as a grape farmer, that's what, we use pond.
Yeah.
We do the same thing, drip irrigation, so, but you're right, you probably get more pressure out of tanks, however, uh, we, uh, the natural aesthetic of the environment is disturbed by twenty-five-thousand-gallon tanks.
Yeah, we, our intent was to try to, I designed, I designed this project, I, I designed it after meeting the Comstocks and, and their wonderful, wonderful land there, it's beautiful. And I wanted to be able to leave it as close as possible to the way we found it every year, so that's why, instead of proposing a permanent, you know, processing building out there, that's why we went with the temperament, so we could break it down and leave it, so the idea is from January through May, the, the property looks like it does now, and then, you know, from May through the, through December, it, it's, it's generating revenue for, for the family.
How many permanent buildings are there going to be?
Just the, just a couple of storage sheds, just like the, the hundred-and-twenty-square-foot storage sheds, there's no like, permanent building, like, like a, like a metal building on concrete slab, there's nothing like that proposed, and that was intentional.
So all the structures there will not be on concrete slabs?
No, no, no.
And the, uh, water tanks will be on gravel?
Uh, uh, it will be compacted, uh, decomposed granite, or gravel, compacted gravel.
Okay, not cement?
Yes, ma'am.
Not concrete? Okay.
Yeah.
I had a question for the staff. How many other cannabis projects are there in the area that have been approved and how many are on, are in the, in the queue?
Well, Ms. Claybon, we'll go ahead and look that up, um, but what I also wanted to point out, if I may, is that, um, water storage tanks are also required as a part of the fire requirements, so just wanted to also point that out.
Right, and so to that point, how many of those twenty-five-thousand-gallon tanks are for fire storage, um, and what do those tanks look like versus the plastic tanks?
So the total water storage for NFPA storage, which is a building code requirement with the fire district, will be determined at the building permit stage by the fire district, so they will advise the project consultant how many gallons have to be specific for the structures in which they're erecting.
Oh, I'd just like to point out that, um, I, I think that your design decision was, was good for the neighbor because, um, instead of using water twenty-four-seven at a lower rate with a bunch of valves and having somebody out there opening and closing valves three times a day, um, you're using it a limited time, so the neighbor will have access, it won't be dropped all day long, so. I, I didn't do the actual math on that, I'm just thinking about it.
Uh, I, I think there was a question earlier before I started my presentation about power there, um, one of the reasons we select, the, the location where the well was drilled was selected is because there's already a power pole there, there's a power drop, um, available at that location, we're not able to get that power drop until we have the use permit, PG&E won't allow it because we don't have the use yet, um, but that's, that's the reason, and then another power drop would also be required for the proposed drying structures, if we even decide to move forward with the structures, that like I said, the, the, the area, we wanted to protect the area so that plants, if they're, if we're transporting harvested material to a processing facility, we need to have a place to like, set it down clean, but while we're waiting, or while we're loading it onto the vehicle to, to transport it.
Uh, so with PG&E, when is it expected? If the permit was issued, when is PG&E power expected to be supplied?
As soon as possible.
I mean, there's, you're not on like a two, three, four-year waiting period for PG&E or?
I, I. I, I have, I don't know. They won't, they won't, you can't get very far in the process until you have a use permit. They do, like, they, they won't. And then you have to have an electrician that will, that will communicate and have a plan for how they're going to, how it's going to be connected to the sources. It's a, it's a pretty complex process, just like the building permits. They go through a lot of different agencies.
Yeah. I know, but I guess for staff, I mean, I've thought, I've seen in other reports that there's at least a projected timeline for access to, to power, to a power source. So, but in this project, we have no projected timeline?
I, no.
That's a question for staff.
Not to our knowledge. PG&E did review the project in relation specifically to the easement onsite. There's an easement to the east, which is one of the reasons why the cultivation area was scrunched down even further. So there is an existing utility line and connection, which I think helps the timeline, but we don't have a specific timeline as far as months or years.
Wow.
Well, they can probably put in a generator if it's.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll use an example at a, a project in Kelseyville that we, we do have, we do have there, and it, there was four to six months for, it was a well that was on PG&E, the power pole was still there, just like this, but it had been disconnected a long time ago. We're trying to get power back to that well, and they, they gave us four to six months to actually energize it.
If we're ready to move on to another topic?
Uh, no. While we're on PG&E, I have a question. So with the, so with PG&E, it also, the report also indicated that there would be additional power by solar panels equipped with battery storage and backup systems. So what is that additional power and backup system? Are we talking to generator? And, and again, the report kind of spelled out that, that this would be used for the security cameras and lights?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I guess I just, you know, have questions around that, is how much, how much power is needed? And if there's a pole there, why aren't we just tapping into the power from the pole?
Well, it's cost prohibitive to run electricity all around, you know, 34 acres. It's a lot easier. The security cameras, security lights they use, it's about one and a half foot square solar panel. You can mount it on a pole or mount it to the roof of the, one of the, the 120 square foot building, mounted to the fence. And then the battery is, you know, it's about a two inch square or cube, two inch cube that goes into those, that equipment. And that's, that's how, you know, during the day, you know, the sun energizes the solar panel, it goes into the battery, and then, so it runs, you know, all day and all night for security lights and security cameras. But that's generally going to be the only thing running off of solar on this project. And it's just because we don't want to be running power all over the place, you know? It's a lot more efficient just to have, and that would be more of a disturbance, too, to run power all over the place.
So there's not going to be a solar installation? It'll be just small panels on existing structures?
Well, there are no existing structures, but yeah.
No, no, but when you say fences and?
Yes, ma'am, yeah. I could see, I could see them trying to use the solar trailers. I, I've had a project before, you guys before. They're, they're specifically made for powering well pumps in the Central Valley, the company that produces them. So I could see if, if it's going to be six months to a year before we could get that, that well energized, that I could see that running a smaller operation off of solar power the first year, off of one of those trailers could be an option that we, we might need to explore. But hopefully, we'll be able to get the, the power from them.
So the solar will not be a, any sort of ground installation?
No, ma'am, there is no proposed, like, ground mounted solar poles or anything like that.
Commissioners, if I may, I have an answer to the question for pending and approved projects within a one and three mile radius.
Oh, thank you.
Within a one mile radius, there are zero pending and zero approved projects. Within a three mile ra, radius, there is one pending project and three approved projects. However, of those three, two of those are active and one is likely to expire.
Say the three mile one more time, please.
One pending, three approved.
And what are the size of those projects?
I would have to analyze those individually.
I have a quick question about fencing.
Yes, ma'am.
I see the fencing will be around the grow area. Are there any other fences proposed? I'm concerned about wildlife.
Uh, no, there is the three string barbed wire around the property, but no, no.
None of those six to eight foot things?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
So I have a few cultural resource related questions, but I wanted to ask the chair if, if, I know the flow is, is the commissioners ask questions, but I, we're already an hour and 40 minutes into this project application, and the public is here. I don't know what their schedules are, if we need to open it up sooner rather than later, if people have to go. I just would hate to continue on another hour without the public input. I have a few questions that I could hold off on till, till the end. I'm just looking for some direction or guidance from the chair.
Yeah, if you'd like to proceed with your questions, and then we'll open a public comment after those two questions.
Okay, thank you. So just, just real quickly, the, the two questions I have related to tribal cultural resources and cultural resources is, was mentioned that the applicant is in, has an agreement in place with Middletown Rancheria. Is that a signed agreement, or is it a, it's a signed, okay. And then also, in terms of there being no cultural resources within the project site, there is reference to sites within the contiguous of the parcels. Without disclosing the location, can you give me an approximate distance of those sites in relationship to the project site?
Yeah. It is at least 700 feet from the project site, and it is, is a known site, and we've had members from the Middletown Rancheria out, and the Comstocks are aware of the site and have protected it the whole time that they've been there. And, and we, knowing about this site, early on, we engaged the Middletown Rancheria right from the start, and, which is why there was no consultation, because we, we volunteered, we, we entered into that agreement in advance, like, hey, we, we want to be respectful and we, we understand the significance.
Okay. And why I ask the questions in terms of distance is if there's access to the Middletown Rancheria abuse of that site, and if there's any obstructions from, in terms of view shed, that site and location, or any type of use. So I'm not, I'm not aware of that, and, and that might not be something that was disclosed, but that's a, a concern I have without knowing all the, all the discussions with the tribe. The second, the third question I had was regarding the drying structures. Can you explain what the tie-down is, how, how they're grounded? And, and so what raises my concern with that question is, is the ground disturbance? How much ground disturbance? And then when we're talking in the cultural resource reports, not the actual report, but our initial study, we're talking 15 meter transects, and that's 49 feet between each site that's looked at. And so that's a lot of distance where cultural material can be missed. And so if there wasn't a focused pedestrian survey, there's, there's the opportunity for cultural resources to be missed. And so I'm trying to understand if that survey included the area where these structures are going to be, or these tie-downs are going to be.
Yes, the, to start, yes, the cultural resource assessment that we have performed did include the, the areas where the temporary structures would be. You're right, it, the trans, you know, 15 meter transects is a large, is a large area. This is a large area, 34 acres were, and, and at the time, it was like the 74 acres when we originally had it done. So it was a very large area at that point in time. The cultural resource monitoring and treatment agreement we have in place that, that is fully executed, would require monitors onsite anytime there's groundbreaking activity. And, and we, we fully intend to adhere to that. And then, as far as access to the culturally significant site, I, I can't say that because it's not my property, so we'd have to, for, for the Middletown Rancheria. But so far, I could tell you that anytime we've had any request by particularly the tribal historic preservation officer to come out, it's absolutely, come on out, let's get second.
Okay. And then in response, what is, when you're talking about as preserved, what, in what ways have that site been preserved? Is it done through an act, or is it just the family saying, we're preserving it, we're not touching it? Is there an actual agreement in place that says it's being preserved?
It may be better for them to answer that, but I, I could tell you that, that area has not been touched. This, this field that we're preparing to go into, I'll, I'll let you.
If I can address that? That, this is a farmed, the area's been farmed for over 100 years. We, we've only been there for 83 years. It's never, ever a concern to touch that. Never have, never will. And years and years ago, we could have just done that. Out of respect, the local tribe family, and intimate friends of our family forever, we absolutely respect and have protected that diligently for the entire time. There was never any written thing, we just did it. We respected it, protected it, have and always will. Hope that answers that adequately. There were never any written agreements ever before.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, and I appreciate the sentiment around that relationship, but I'm thinking, and, and I, I like the investment in terms of your family saying, we want to be here. And so, so I'm thinking 100 years down the road, if there's no agreement protecting that land, it can change in the future, you know? And so that's why I bring that question up, and.
Yeah, I, I don't know how that proceeds from this point, I can just tell you what's happened to this date.
And, and to that point, too, that's, while I appreciate the close relationship that the Comstock family has with the, with the Middletown Rancheria, it would have been nice in our report for consideration to have had some indication or some response from the Middletown Rancheria that, for that to be part of the AB 52 and part of our documents here. So.
Commissioners?
I wish we could, I wish we could provide you with more specifics, but I, we can't. And then another thing that had occurred during this, in the four years that we were working on it, is the, the tribal historic preservation officer for the Middletown Rancheria changed. It's a new, I just met him, oh, one month ago. And so we were working with the previous historic preservation officer, and, and I'm sure that the new one is aware of this site, but he, he's not been out there, so we don't, we don't, we've got to develop that relationship going forward. That's just, you know, thanks, Jane.
Also, Chair Chavez, if I may, AB 52 is a, a very clear process between, from government to government. We, the county does not have the authority to require an agreement, a monitoring agreement with a specific tribe, so that would not have been part of our staff report.
Thank you, Director.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Also, I'd like to clarify that, to your request, Commissioner Rosenthal, information gained during an AB 52 consultation from any tribe is protected information. The county cannot provide that information to the public. And unfortunately, you're, you're an appointed official. If we provide one of you some information, we provide, we have to provide all of you that information, and once we provide the commission the information, it becomes public. So there's, so any information gained from the tribes is put in a confidential part of the file, and it would not be attached to the information that's provided to you today. If you have general questions, such as the ones that have been asked today about agreements and things like that, and whether or not there are in fact maybe any impacts that have been addressed, then certainly you can ask those questions, but the specific information that was shared by tribes is, is not something the county can share. However.
I'll keep, I'll keep it very, very simple and very general. I was not asking for disclosure of any information. I was only asking it would have been nice to have some acknowledgement in our report that the conversation did happen.
Yes, and that would be certainly something that, that you, that your commission can ask for, yes. And however, the tribe could also.
Not asking for anything more.
Yeah. And, and tribes could also provide information, any information that they choose to provide. It's just the county cannot provide it.
I understand, I understand that. But just in our report, just to know that, that, that conversation occurred would have been helpful.
I did see it somewhere. I can't remember where.
Yeah. Well, there was, there was, there was, yeah. There was no response. There was a response from a tribe because all tribes were notified, and there was a response from a tribe outside the area that then, that then transferred the, the response to Middletown Rancheria, saying that they were the tribe.
But there was also a note about something else.
Can you clarify that?
Yeah.
Yeah, just, if it's of assistance, on page 13 of the staff report, under tribal comments, it does note that Habemidol Pomo of Upper Lake deferred to Middletown Rancheria. There was not a request for formal consultation. However, Rancho Lake LLC has voluntary, voluntarily entered into a cultural resources monitoring and treatment agreement with the Middletown Rancheria. So it is on page 13. Not sure if that's what you're looking for, but I just wanted to clarify that we had that information in the staff report.
And the county has a copy of the, the cultural resources monitoring treatment agreement on, in the file for, for this project, the, the fully executed version.
And so is, they're going to be involved with, like you said, they're going to be onsite, but are they involved with the training for your guys' staff?
Yeah, that's part of, that's part of the agreement.
Okay. Great to hear. And then just the last part, any information on the drying facility, what's, what that's going to look like in term, terms of ground disturbance?
So they'll be putting down some, some kind of fabric just to keep dust from getting up into the area. So laying down some fabric, erecting these, you know, metal frame structures, oh, yeah, the anchors, so earth anchors, that is, but they're, like, you drill them into the ground, and that's how they're secured. So it will be drilled into the ground, but it won't be excavated. And, and then, and then there's a, there's a fabric, engineered fabric that goes over the structure. So as far as ground disturbance, they're going to be laying on top of the ground, like, the majority of it will be laying on top of the surface of the ground. Except for initially, there's probably, the first time you do it, there'll be a little bit of blading just to smooth things out, and the, the monitors would be onsite for that. And then lay down the, lay down the fabric to keep the dust out of the structure, erect the metal skeleton of the structure, anchor, earth anchors into the ground to secure the structure to, to the ground so it didn't blow away, and then fabric over the top of that.
So with that, there's going to be no soil spoils or anything for a tribal monitor to look at when it's drilled into the ground?
No, I, I don't believe so. There, if anything, it would just be a small pile at the very top.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I'd like to open up public comment for this item, so.
Before we do that, Chair, may I request a break?
Sure, we'll, we'll do a 10 minute break. It's 11, so we'll be back at 11:10.
Who's ever in charge of the thermostat? Can they turn it up just a touch?
Who's ever in charge of the thermostat, can they turn it up just a touch?
I'm sure I can call Jim and we'll have a talk. But he, he's been a man of his word ever since, and especially protecting that property. I've heard stories of people in Pewter Creek fishing and him saying, hey, you need to move over to the side and protect his property. So he's not going to let this, this business venture destroy the property or, or the, the region as a whole. So I have no fear about what's going on. As far as the aquifer and the water in the area, as a former board member of HVL CSD, that aquifer is, is amazing. It is truly amazing how it serves that community. And I'm the first one who's going to say, I want my water at Hidden Valley. I'm not going to worry about it. We've done tests after tests after tests and they showed it here recently. Every month they do a test of drawing that thing down, even during the drought, drawing it down, how fast it replenishes. So that's just personal opinion. I'm not speaking for the board there, new board. I've been off of it a couple of years now. But I think it's, I hope you guys will go ahead and approve the project and move forward. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, good morning. My name is Bill Wilson and I would like to address odor, please. The county says the application process requires a property management plan that includes air quality section explaining how the operation will not degrade the air quality. It also says inspections by the county and air quality officials to ensure that the odor control systems are effective and prevent public nuisance. But we were told there are no mitigating other than maybe airflow. And the other question is, has anybody checked to see where the normal airflow is and towards where? If there's 19 acres of canopy, that means there's going to be at least 40,000 cannabis plants, 2,000 plants per acre, which seems to be a normal thing. 18, I mean 12 feet tall, I mean, there is going to be an airflow. And, and I have heard for so many cannabis growers and consultants now that say, only a few people will be bothered. That isn't acceptable. That morally is not acceptable. There should be mitigation on odor. There are fences, you can put screens up fences. There's vegetation screening, which of course takes years to grow. There are measures, but I don't see any air quality measures in any of this plan. And I think we need them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
My, my name's Peter Lucetti. I am the neighbor to the Comstock's. And I'd like to make several comments. I'm going to need more than three minutes. So I'm going to ask the chair if I could, he would yield me more time than the three minutes that's allotted for public comment. A lot has been said here today.
We'll stick to the three minutes. Could we restart his time?
My name is Peter Lucetti. I'm from 21333 and 21565 Grange Road. I'm the neighbor of the Comstock's. I want to be clear that we've farmed our ranch immediately adjacent to the field where they're proposing to grow cannabis for 56 years uninterrupted. We produced a crop of cattle on that farm. We also farm in several other locations in California and have a long history in California, just as the Comstock's do. Regarding my letter to the board, I ask you to read it carefully and thoroughly. There are many issues in the letter that I believe raise questions about this application. And I feel that there, you know, the substance of these issues rises to the level of a fair argument that we need to go into full sequo. I'll highlight a few of the issues. Adverse water supply impacts. My hydrologist is the same hydrologist that's monitored the aquifer for 28 years for Hidden Valley Lake Community Services District, Ryan Crawford. His comment at this point is, in its proposed location and pumping regime, the well that was drilled by the Comstock's for this project will cause material adverse impacts from the Lucetti Ranch water supply. The risk exists even in years with normal precipitation will be exacerbated in dry years. Now, I don't have enough time to present my whole case as the, as the applicant has, but I wish to present my whole case. Piecemealing of the application. You can't piecemeal an application by say something pre-existed when it did not. They're saying the well pre-existed. The well did not pre-exist. It was specifically drilled for this project. Wildfire risk. They've acknowledged in their presentation, the road is 16 to 18 feet wide and 4290 requires 20 feet. So that's a flaw on the application that needs further review. But more importantly, they've entered into an agreement with the Guanac Valley Resort to allow evacuation of the entire Guanac Valley Resort in a disaster, oh, 4,000 car trips through their property, which affects the road we all use in common. So this project cannot be reviewed today without a full evaluation of the risks associated with that possibility. Pesticide use. I think it's self-explanatory. They've acknowledged there's no odor control process for this project. And that needs to happen and it's, it's required by law. Farmland protection zone. There's been comments made by their counsel about my request. It's attachment three to my letter, that we do an amendment to the, to the, to the zoning requirement, allowing my prime farmland, I have prime farmland, I'm going to say it again, prime farmland gets the same equitable treatment as everybody else's prime farmland that has FPZ protection in Lake County. And I'm insisting on this. This is a critical issue for me. I don't think I should be prejudicially treated. Odor control, I think is self-explanatory, as I said, they don't have it. But here's my.
The time's up, but I'll, I'll extend another minute to your time.
I'm asking for two minutes, please.
Okay, we'll do two minutes.
Thank you.
Are you with anyone today that can give you their time?
She's yielding.
Okay, we'll do two, two more minutes.
Thank you. Programmatic EIR consistency. The director of CDD recently in November presented to the Lake County Board of Supervisors that they should consider doing a programmatic EIR for all of cannabis in Lake County. The fact that the lead agency, CDD, recognizes this need, potentially significant impacts, specifically quoted where for hydrology and odor control, constitutes substantial evidence that an EIR is required for this project as well. I want to say this in closing. You know, we do not believe this application should either be accepted or rejected at this meeting today. We, we, we don't wish the Comstock's hardship or harm. What we wish is for you to respect our 56 years of history in the cattle business, immediately over the fence line. There are several issues that haven't been properly addressed and resolved. We want to refer this back, application back to CDD and go into full sequo and allow us to tell our side of the story, just as they've told their side of the story here at the table today. The Lucettys respectfully, respectfully expressed deep frustration with this process. You know, we have repeatedly tried to communicate directly with the applicant and their advisors, and we've had no success at doing that, they refuse to speak to us. We invited them to participate in the well test that we ran, which didn't last a few hours. It lasted six months. We had sensors in the wells for six months. What we wanted to do is put sensors in their well, sensors in our wells, and run them all together during the dry period and find out how that affected things. But they refused to cooperate with that and did not want to join me in trying to solve this problem. And I had to spend considerable amount of time and resources to make it happen. So, you know, a neighbor running a successful 56-year-old cattle business should not shoulder the burden of enforcing proper sequel review. Should not be on me. I'm not, I'm not trying to enter the cannabis business. They are. It is necessary for CDD and the applicant to do the necessary work to perfect this application before it goes back to this commission. So we, we again conclude by saying, we are not asking you to accept or reject. We're asking you to defer and get the work done. And then we can go about the business of properly reviewing this. It hasn't been properly reviewed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Chair Chavez?
Yes, Director.
If I could just clarify the matter about the programmatic EIR. I presented it to the board as an option that they could consider, specifically regarding water and odor. And the board said that they did not feel that they needed a programmatic EIR to address odor impacts. They were comfortable with the position where we're taking of increasing setbacks from off-site residences, but they did express interest in water, but not specific just to cannabis, but noting that it did have other applications. I didn't want the planning commission to have the wrong idea based on Mr. Lucetti's input. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Chavez, members of the planning commission. If I can indulge the staff to maybe bring up that odor graph that was presented by the applicant, because I want to touch on that. It's.
Could you please state your first and last name?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, Tom Lasik, resident.
Sure.
The reason I want to bring that up is I know that we just had a conversation about this and being a mathematician by education, a graph is always great. Was there a minute ago? Please don't dock me time for, for this piece. Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. Okay, so, so this is a classic inverse square graph. It's pretty typical. When you talk about things like odor and light and things like that, it diminishes over distance. And this is, this is, I think I would encourage CDD to consider this as they're going through the ordinances, based on the recommendation that the board had about having some sort of scale on this. But I think the interpretation that was given by the applicant is not quite correct. And let me just put this in context. Several of you have been to my property or to my neighbor's property during the wellness ranch permitting process. What's there today is a minor use cultivation site, which is about 10,000 square feet, which more or less is a quarter acre. That's about 800 feet from my property. The odor is barely tolerable at 800 feet for a quarter acre. And it diminishes over space. Now, they're saying that they're going to be about 800 feet away from the nearest residence, but they're talking about 19.6 acres for the same space. So to achieve the same amount of tolerance, if a quarter acre, if at 800 feet is tolerable, and you now increase that by 80-fold, that is very problematic. Okay? So to say, well, it diminishes over time, that's actually very true. But you have to look at the quantity that's going there. There's nothing on this graph that shows what's actually tolerable. Nobody's saying that you're going to sleep around. You know, if you look at the very left of the graph at zero, you're not going to be sleeping inside the canopy bed. That's, that's just going to drive me nuts. There's a certain distance where it becomes acceptable. They have, and what I'm saying is that at least for most people, and probably not, because Mr. Bill here, Bill Wilson, he's 800 feet away and he can't sleep at night for his situation. So if you look at this graph, that would be around 500 feet is tolerable.
If we could wrap up the comment?
Yeah. My point is, is that at a quarter acre, 800 feet is probably fine. But we're not talking a quarter acre, talking 80 times that, 84 times that. So the distance needs to be further. Or are you just going to drive people nuts with, with odor? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning. My name is Erin Cherry, and though my name may not say it, I am a Comstock. I'm Jim Comstock's daughter. I grew up on the ranch where my dad still lives and I grew to love the land. It was part of me. But as, as most children do, I don't know that I fully appreciated it till I, I left. I left for school, I left for jobs and I, I got married. And luckily, my life situation was such that I was able to move back. And while I don't live on the property, I do live in Middletown. And I'm raising my family here in Middletown. I have three children. And I personally am out on the ranch just about every day. And my children are out of the ranch as much as they possibly can be. And I have shared the love of this land with them. And the importance of this project is to preserve the land that I love so much. I apologize, I get a little emotional. It means a lot to me. My whole life, I've heard my dad, my parents, working hard to keep this land. And I am so impressed that the creativity may be a little bit of luck and a lot of hard work. It's still here. The ranch is still here and part of my family. I'm forever grateful for that. And it is a constant discussion in our family, how we can keep it so. And when the cannabis operation was first presented to our family, I will tell you, I was against it. That did not sound like something I was interested in. However, because I love the land so much, I did look into it instead of just completely dismissing it. And the more I learned about cannabis operations, the legal cannabis operations, I learned most of my problems were from my experiences with illegal grows around the county. As I know, many people are, that's, that was my first experience with cannabis. And the more I learned about the regulations and the controls, I began to look at this as a possible way to save our ranch. I love the land. I'm out there, I love the native plants, I love hiking the hills everywhere on it. This project will allow us to use 2% of the land. 2% of the land, and the land we are using has been previously farmed for many years. It allows the 98% of the property to be preserved in its natural state. That is so important to me, to be able to keep this land and to preserve it as it is. I hope you will consider this project to be able to support my family and our roots here and be able to preserve this for my, my lifetime, my children, and hopefully future generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning. I'm Kevin Smith. I live on Grange Road. My grandkids are the fifth generation in Middletown. And I have the utmost respect for the Comstock's and Jim. I've done several, I've done a lot of work for some of the legal grows there here in Lake County. And I will have to say that they are as nice as any vineyard in Napa Valley that I work at. But on the other hand, I've worked for quite a few illegal grows here. And that's somewhat working for the Lake County dump. I think anytime we can get a chance to get one approved that meets all the regulations and meets all the standards, I think we should do it and eliminate some more of the illegal grows that are causing all the problems in this county. This site is a perfect site, in my opinion, for a grow. It's out of the public sight, nobody is affected by it. There's very few people there near this project at all. So in my, my opinion only, but I feel this is a perfect spot for this grow. We're going to have grows in this county, they're going to happen. And I think this is a very reasonable spot for this grow. So I hope you do approve this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Chair Chavez, members of the commission. My name is James Comstock. I'm Jim's son. I, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today. I'm going to try to make my, my remarks very brief. I did want to say, I'm very mindful of the things that Commissioner Brown brought up. I don't know a lot of folks know this. My wife's native, she's a member of the Klamath tribe and of Fort Pixu. I get a little emotional talking about this. We're guests on this land. We've been here a long time, but that's nothing compared to the history of this land. And legal agreements aside, which I'm not opposed to, we're committed to protecting this land and to working with our tribal partners in that. I really appreciate those comments. In that same vein, we want to be good neighbors to everyone. We, we want to consider always how our neighbors are affected by what we do. In that vein, when we first considered this project in 2020, my dad and I reached out to Peter Lucetti. And we went and talked to him and told him what our plan was. We invited open communication and asked to work together to be good neighbors. Over that period of time, I logged 25, more than 25 contacts with Mr. Lucetti, trying to work with him and his family for mutually agreeable solutions. Early on, I sought input from him on facility placement, on the security plan, and we incorporated his requests into our project. On a site visit with him in April of 2021, Mr. Lucetti seemed to be on the same page with us and said that his family would write a letter in support of our project. He sent me an email in May of 2021 saying, we're rooting for you. Sometime in July of 2023, we advised him that we're reducing the size of the project. We were shocked in November of 2023 to receive a letter from him asking us to withdraw the project and demanding to see our contracts, business documents, and proposing that he partner with us in business ventures. At one point, he proposed selling us water for the project. In December of 2023, we attended a mediated meeting with community development here at the courthouse. It was adversarial and unproductive. We met again in May of 2024. We listened to Mr. Lucetti's concerns. He offered no alternative solution except for dropping the project. In May of 2025, he sent correspondence suggesting a fence line resolution, that we speak over the fence line, but declined to offer any resolution or proposals to us.
If you would like to wrap up your comments?
I will, thank you. We've made exhaustive efforts to work well with our neighbors. We want to. We have to consider all of our neighbors. And this project impacts the least of our neighbors in the most accommodating way we possibly can. We ask for your support in this, and I thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Sarah Bodnar and I'm a consultant that's had the pleasure of working with the applicant on this project over the last few years. I'd like to start by thanking the community development staff for your diligence in this project. It's been a complex one that's involved many rounds of revisions. And thank you for bringing it forward very thoughtfully. I have participated in the conversations that have been mentioned here today with community development staff and the neighbors and the Comstock family. I've also toured the property with community development staff. And all of the input that's been received through this four-year period, which has led to continuations and modifications, has all been very thoughtfully incorporated. And so what's before you today is very much ready for your consideration. There's been an excellent team of professional consultants that have addressed the environmental concerns and community development staff has run down every single concern that's been raised, explored it, looked at mitigations, and determined that this project as proposed will not have significant environmental or community impacts. I'm asking you to support this project, not because these are good, thoughtful people and operators, but this project meets all of the land use requirements and it's a model project for what we want to see here in Lake County. It's where we want to see cannabis grown, in the way we want to see cannabis grown. And I respectfully ask you to approve this based on its accordance with the land use laws. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We'll take a look in the Zoom room. I believe we have a few hands. Okay, so we'll take our first speaker. Betsy. Please state your first and last name for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, commissioners. My name is Betsy Kahn. I'm the editor and sole proprietor of the Essential Public Information Center. As such, I cover many of the governmental activities in the county. In this particular context, I am concerned only about one question, and that is whether or not the state adjudicated water master for Pewter Creek was consulted to determine whether or not there would be any impacts to the creek itself from the proximity of the well, since, as I understand, at the edge of the effective area is right at the creek or in the creek. I think this is a crucial determination. I apologize if I missed the reference, but I think that y'all should consider that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We have another hand in the Zoom room. And our next speaker is Donna. You'll have three minutes. Please state your first and last name.
Thank you, commissioners. Donna Mackwitz, the Red Bud Audubon Society. Part of our mission is protecting birds and their environments. In the past four years, only one plant and bird survey was done for this project on February 8th and 9th of 2021. So no endangered plants that bloom in the spring could have been identified, same with birds. Not mentioned in the natural investigation surveys. Also were bald and golden eagles, burrowing owls that are now listed as endangered as of 10/10/2021. Tri-colored blackbirds, now listed as California species of special concern. As was the raptor not mentioned, the merlin, all listed since the 2021 winter field study. These species can be verified on eBird at Cornell Labs, a longtime online citizen science program. Multi-seasonal bird surveys are necessary for sequo compliance, especially for larger projects and those impacting sensitive habitats, because different birds use them for different reasons. Wintering migration breeding across seasons, requiring broader surveys to meet migratory bird treaty act at state laws with specific protocols for sensitive species like the burrowing owl. And we need to think about the year-round multi-season focus and checks to avoid more habitat loss and more species loss. Thank you for considering my comment.
Thank you for your comment. I believe we have another hand in the Zoom room. Oh, that is, that looks like that's all the hands in the Zoom room. I'll take another look here in the chambers. If anyone wishes to speak before we close public comment. All right, we'll close public, public comment and bring you back to the commission for further discussion or considerations.
I have a, a sort of a, a comment about Betsy's question. Was the water master of Pewter Creek consulted? Because it's an adjudicated creek, am I, I'm understanding?
Trey Sherrill, consultant for the applicant. No, the water master was, was not, it's not, we weren't taking water from Pewter Creek. As the, the study, the, there was, there was a study and a legal decision that came down on Coyote Valley pertaining to the Hidden Valley Lake Community Services District. The study concluded that water in the Coyote Valley aquifer system is percolating groundwater and therefore not subject to water rights. The hydrogeologist alluded to that in his, it's actually on one of, in, in his report. And so therefore, there, there was no concern. Plus, our modeling indicated that the well would not impact flow in Pewter Creek. And so therefore, we did not feel that it was necessary to reach out to the water master.
I had questions in regard to the drought management plan. So, and I don't know if this goes to the applicant or to staff, but in the drought management plan, it speaks to, well, number one, there's a drought management plan that is presented, it goes back and forth between, in the staff report, it talks about or alludes to that the drought management plan will be active all year round. But yet, in the conditions of approval, it speaks to just during emergency. So in emergent, if there's a declared drought emergency. But then some of the, the agreement, I'm sorry, as the staff mentioned in, in discussing the staff report, there was a condition, a 10% reduction of water use, which would be from 49.1 or 0.2 acre feet to 44.2. And, you know, in, in a drought, in a severe drought situation, that's really not very useful or helpful. And so with the drought management plan, I'm just wondering, will the drought management plan be implemented year-round? And can the conditions of approval be beefed up so that in case a, an emergence, a drought emergency? so that in case a drought emergency is actually declared, that there would actually be some mitigation measures that would actually help with the situation?
I can answer that question, those questions, a series of questions. With that, operations would include water use management, and that would reduce water use for irrigation. The reduction of canopy and the reduction of water use during a declared drought emergency is proposed at 10% by the applicant. The Commission does have within their power to amend any conditions as necessary. So that would be amendable to the Commission.
Okay, so that's what I would suggest, that there be something that's more impactful in the conditions of approval, such as reducing, reducing the, you know, sometimes it's basically, we just don't plant for a season. You know, that's, happens in farming on a regular basis, as far as if there's no, if there's no water, the crop is reduced, as this area is basically an annual crop. So there's a reduction of, I mean, other options, you know, could be a reduction of crop. It could be even, you know, as far as dry farming, which, again, you have different farming operations that end up doing that when we are in a serious drought situation. So yes, I would, I would be, I would encourage that we change the conditions of approval to, to beef that up.
And if I may provide a little bit of history to the drought management plan and the hydrological analysis requirement. In July of 2021, the Board of Supervisors had implemented ordinance 3106 that required a hydrological analysis for any land use project. This also incorporated a drought management plan. This was specific to measures to reduce water use, and the specific to the size of the canopy or the water use is open for interpretation, to which these applicants did choose to utilize the 10%. But there is no specific regulation that would require anything further.
A question about a comment that was made, and we recently have reviewed the Guanac Valley project here. I don't recall that this Grange Road was listed as a potential exit if there was any fire issues. Oh, I don't know that, it just is, that was an interesting comment.
I can speak to that. Yeah. Yeah, thank you. That is part of the revised and approved MAHA project. In case of emergency, they were improving the, the abilities for evacuation, lowering the impacts on the highway by allowing just that one emergency use through Mr. Comstock's property on Grange, to get to Grange Road. It's not going to, all other times except for in case of an emergency evacuation, there will be a locked gate there.
Right. But there was a comment made earlier that, that the roads for this project needed to be improved. I wondered if there was connection between any of that and whether or not we need to think about it. But I just, we've talked on so many projects about fire and exits and roads, roads are just as like, oh my goodness.
Yeah, I'd like clarity on that as well. I believe there was a comment from the public about Hidden Valley Lake using Grange Road as an exit.
There was no comment or recommendation for a traffic study for this project. So we, and we did not feel that it would be necessary.
And to add on to that, if I may, that in the traffic analysis in the initial study, it specifies and discusses how the project would produce up to 24 daily trips on a regular basis, and then 40 during peak operational or harvest season hours. The threshold from the state, I know we've discussed these, I believe, before, but for the SEQA analysis is typically 120 trips or more trigger that traffic analysis, or if public works or another department such as ourselves recommends it based on the certain situation of that property.
In the, in the project presentation, it was, a comment was made that improvements needed to be made to the road. So to sort of, how did the, all these things fit together as far as, and do the, and do the improvements need to be made before the project goes forward?
So yes, I can speak to that. The improvements are for Public Resource Code 4290 for the appropriate length, or width of the roadways, and then the gate, the access gate. And with that, that is included within the initial study. The roadways would need to be 4290 compliant at the time that the structures were erected.
But not before the project is approved?
Not before the project is approved, no. We would not require any improvements to any parcel prior to project approval. As a matter of fact, we require the baseline conditions to remain the same during project application. That way, nothing changes on site, and the initial study is still accurate.
I see. Thank you.
So for, really quickly jumping on that, so the road improvements for 4290 are within the parcel? That's correct?
That is correct.
I have a quick question, and this is my last question. Management plan states the grow area will be disced, and I'm concerned about the plastic mulch being used. How will it be cleaned up when the project is terminated, or will it forever be in the soil?
No, public comment was closed.
He has a good point.
It's a question to the applicant.
And I can talk about the road, the Guanac thing too, if you so desire. But to ask, answer your question, the plastic is pulled up. It's laid down while they're disking and furrowing, it's laid down, and then with the drip lines, and then it's pulled up, it's pulled up by hand and then balled up and taken to Quacken Bush.
So the term "plastic mulch" refers to a sheet of plastic, not a shredded product?
Yes, it's a sheet of plastic, and the purpose is to keep soil moisture in the soil. It's a water conservation.
Thank you, that answers my question.
So as long as you're there, and we're talking with you. So these, on this project too, the plants will be in the ground, not in pots?
Correct.
Okay. And in regard to the drought management plan, so now the drought management plan was based on the state water resource cannabis best management practices to conserve water year-round. Is the applicant amenable to making, beefing up conditions of approval to follow the drought conditions year-round rather than just the statement of the 10% reduction in a declared drought emergency?
So the, the operator, the operator that would be doing that, he's currently has the flu, and he's not here with us at the moment. The Comstocks are the co-applicants, and I don't want to speak on his behalf.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm sorry, I would have to stick with the drought management plan that was previously agreed to, at least for now.
Okay. Odor control, that has been, as we all know, odor and water and roads are topics of, of expanded conversation when we talk about cannabis projects. And for the odor, I know for myself, you know, being in this position and reviewing and trying to become better educated, I had listened to the Sonoma County hearing, their planning commission, who did do an EIR exploring odor. And basically, you know, just to summarize or whatever, what they came up with is, is basically its space, its distance. That, as the chart that you showed previously. So, but I would also like to ask you about that chart that you showed previously. That was based on one acre. What does that chart look like for 20 acres, for 19.6 acres?
I don't, I don't know, but that chart actually came out of the Sonoma County EIR. That's where I pulled it. I don't, I don't know, and what is an odor unit? I, I'm not sure. Yeah, and actually, I was just informed that the applicant, who is watching it at home, is amenable to increasing, or increasing the reduction for drought management when a declared drought emergency is declared. So is there, maybe we could take some direction from the Commission at what, what, what threshold or what, how much could we reduce it by, like, when a drought emerges? What, the operation needs to be feasible still. And, and it's not easy. I mean, it is, you can definitely do it, it just takes a couple of months to reduce your canopy with, with the state. It's very easy with the county, as long as you do it before July 1st. But just how much of a reduction would you like to see in the event of a declared drought emergency?
Well, I think as far as in plant, again, this is an annual crop. Sounds like there's going to be one season of planting. So it seems, I mean, in general, we kind of get an idea of what our rainfall status is prior to your planting, that you would, as many farmers do, make that decision based on the availability of water. You know, of what their farming practices are going to be. So it seems like you could adjust your farming practices.
And that's what I'm, so like, right now, we're proposing a 10% reduction. It sounds like a greater than 10% reduction is what is desired.
I'm not asking for a greater than 10%, I'm just, there are other, there are other options. That was kind of, to be honest, I'll be, I'll be perfectly honest that, to me, the 10% offer of reduction or whatever is kind of like a boilerplate offer. It's, it doesn't carry a whole lot of meaning if there is an actual declared drought in the sense of, you know, the impact on the drought is going to be. Yeah, so let me throw it like this, as far as, again, I'm in the farming industry, as I said before, whatever, I operate with a pond. If I don't have water in that pond because of lack of rainfall, that's all I got to work with. And it's not anybody, or it's Mother Nature telling me what I have to work with. So, and then I have to adjust my farming for that year, you know, based on that water that's in the pond. But, you know, what other farming practices are you willing to make adjustments to? Whether it's a reduction in plants, whether it's, you know, deficit water irrigation, or, you know, downsizing your operation to correspond to, you know, which farmers do. Strawberry farmers will do that, you know, throughout the state of California.
I'd like to suggest that this is a legislative issue. I don't think it's something that I feel comfortable telling somebody whether or not they have to reduce their water consumption during a drought emergency on an individual basis. I think the Board of Supervisors should make that decision. That's.
Well, I would, I would disagree in the sense that I think, and because it is in the conditions of approval that they've put this in there. So I, as a planning commissioner, I'm looking.
Additionally, if, I'm sorry to interrupt. Also, the ordinance, the code, county code only requires a drought management plan for times of declared drought. I'm not sure if we have a nexus to require a year-round reduction of water use on a proposed project.
And so what I'm saying is that drought management plan speaks to, it's based on the state, the state, what did I just read a few minutes ago? Anyway, that, that is, that recommends basically the year-round water conservation. So if we're going to have that information in there, I'd have to look up the drought management plan.
So the year-round conservation, water conservation requirements, you're right. Those are requirements of, after that, then we say, in addition to that, when a drought emergency is declared, we'll, we'll reduce our operation by 10%. And I just got word that the, the co-applicant is willing to reduce the operation by 25% by a quarter. If, if that is even, if we can even incorporate it at this, at this time, he's willing to do that. You know, drought, we take droughts serious.
I am showing a time of 12. I usually get this reminder from Director Turner about staff needing their break. Is that correct, Director?
Yes, 12:30 is our hard labor law.
Okay, should we continue for the next 30 minutes and then take our break at 12:30?
And that'd be great, thank you, and yeah, just reminding the Commission that we do have three more items to go.
Yeah, thank you. So we'll do a hard stop at 12:30 for our staff so they can take a break. So we'll continue, so we have 29 minutes.
You mentioned co-applicant. Can you delineate who the applicants are again?
So Rancho Lake LLC and then Comstock Ranch LLC, those are the applicants. The original application was submitted under Rancho Lake LLC with the lease agreement in place. It took a lot longer to get here than anticipated. And then about two years ago, through an agreement that was reached to, between the landowners and the owner of Rancho Lake, whose name is Edward Fussell, they reached an agreement. And so now this permit would be issued to both. And, I mean, it's kind of, all use permits are issued to the landowner in some regards, because you can't take it anywhere else. You know, it runs with the land. But in this case, they're co-applicants, Rancho Lake LLC as well as Comstock Ranch LLC.
And the Rancho LLC, those are the operators?
Yes, Rancho Lake LLC would be the operator.
I see. Thank you. Do you have more questions? I have another question.
Go ahead.
A question on the, on the odor mitigation. On page 20 of the staff report on two, the impacts of the air quality, and it says, and maybe this is more global question, it says it can be mitigated to less than significant levels. What is the process, as we talked about looking at the graph, that the graph was for one acre? What is the process to extrapolate to larger or smaller or indoor, outdoor? And, you know, we see this, you know, reduced to, you know, mitigated levels. What does that mean, mitigated based on, and as they say, maybe it's a more global thing that we have to look, look at as a planning commission, but where's the measure? Where's the, where's the checklist of what it means to be mitigated to be an acceptable level?
Yes, that's a good question. That is one of the items, as you're probably aware, that is slated for further discussions with the Board of Supervisors. We don't currently have adopted thresholds. But what we do in our SEQA analysis is we look at the layout of the land in particular, whether it's, you know, has a bunch of residences or sensitive receptors around it. We ultimately rely on those setbacks that are adopted in the ordinance that are intended to mitigate those odor impacts. And if there would be anything else that is particular to the site that could result in a higher impact of odor or not. In this case, it's an outdoor project with not much population around it. We do know that there are, of course, some residences, but it's not in a highly populated area, and it does exceed all of those setbacks intended to mitigate odor. So that is how we came to that conclusion of less than significant.
Well, you mentioned SEQA, there was no SEQA evaluation done on this particular project.
They do an initial study.
Oh, yeah.
Or the initial study, excuse me, yeah. I forget that this is not the first time we've seen this.
Yeah, it's on, it's within the air quality section of the initial study.
Okay. Thank you.
I have kind of a stupid question. Does a SEQA review include odor analysis? Thank you. I'm getting a nod from Nicole.
I did have a question, which kind of ties back into odor, seeing as that is one of the, I think, topics that is of most concern, that I've heard pretty frequent in today's discussion. And I think these two things kind of tie into each other. And I know that we already talked about it and discussed that there are no thresholds currently for the odor mitigation for these projects. But the 540 by 150 harvest, storage, and staging engineered membrane structures for seasonal use, that is strictly just for drying, is that correct?
Yes, drying and processing.
Drying and processing. So I know that there's a transport type 13 distributor, self-transport only. Would any of the products be processed elsewhere? Or are we doing it all in-house for this project? Or are we doing it all in-house for this project?
Prior to construction of the structures, if they, the stages of development are preferred broken down prior to the structures being erected, then the type 13 transportation would allow to move cannabis products from this licensed facility to an additional licensed facility for processing.
Okay. And basically, what I was going for with that question or speaking on that topic is, at what point in the process does odor become like potent? For example, when does it start? When the plant is, you know, afoot? I'm assuming these are all going to be smaller plants. I've seen a, a couple of projects that Trey has presented to us where they're using smaller plants, which go into the water and et cetera, but focusing on odor. At what point in the size of these plants does odor start going? And I'm assuming that, that, you know, kind of, that chart kind of goes up as the bigger the plants get. And then to the point where, where I would assume that it would be the most potent would be when they are being harvested. So around what time does that take place? Because when we're evaluating projects like this, I mean, this one specifically, but others as well, we're looking at, you know, a certain season, a certain month, two months potentially of when this odor is at its highest peak. And that would be the only comment that I really have to think about, that it's not going to be, you know, like a year-round thing. Cultivation's only happening at certain times of the, of this, you know, of the, of the year. And then what are the highest, where you would potentially be getting odor complaints? Yeah, sure, if you want to answer that question.
So with the cannabis plants in the field, they're going to, they're going to be producing their odors when the plants are flowering. The odor comes from the flower. You walk into a field of immature plants and you can barely smell it. But you work into a field of mature plants and it is quite potent. I'm not going to deny it. The, and then, and the size doesn't really matter because there are some strains that are low to the ground and they're, they're going to produce just as much odor as a much larger plant. It's about the phase of the life. But that being said, odors are going to start, the plants are going to start, they start to flower, but in like August, but it's kind of a, just like a little bit. It's really like September that they really start to flower and put on the cannabinoids and the terpenes that, terpenes is what you smell. And that would happen in September. It would continue through into October. Some point in late September or early October, harvest would start. And then there would be a reduction in odor from that point on, generated from the field. There would then be a new source of odor, which would be the structures. I do want to clarify, the structures are for drying and storage only. No, what I consider processing, which is manipulating of the plant, you know, trimming it and, and things like that would occur onsite. That is not the intent to have people here working. It's just for hanging the plants, keeping them dry, drying them out if necessary, and then transporting them to a processing facility where they would, they would go through the processing phase. Manipulation of the plant to like make it.
So once the plants are cut and stored away, in a sense, the air or the odor would be reduced or confined within the structures with, you know, I'm assuming you would still have some, some of it escaping because they're not completely sealed. And then from that point that they are in those structures, let's say, late October? Mid-October, late October?
Well, they won't, they're not going to hang around that long. So it's going to be harvest from the field into the structures. Even, even, even that, those larger structures in that number isn't sufficient for this whole, this whole field. So they're going to harvest through the field, go into these structures where they'll go through their initial drying, then they're going to get boxed down and towed to, and transported to a processing facility. And then the next round will come down. So it'll, it'll kind of be like a bell curve. Like odors will increase as the plants are flowering, it will peak, and then as harvest starts, it will start to diminish. And then, and then by the end of October, it should be, you know, outside of those structures, it should not be detectable.
Okay, yeah, because I'm, I'm just trying to, so from the point that they are cut and hung, they stay in those drying facilities for how long?
Up to two weeks.
Two weeks, okay. I'm just trying to find what I need to, to make my finding regarding odor. And, you know, I'm getting these, I'm answering, asking these questions so that I can also, you know, get a better idea of like what's happening and around what months we're expecting these, these odors to happen. So I think that answers my questions. Thank you.
May I add one more thing that I think may be helpful for your questions? As far as SEQA is concerned, in the air quality section, it's sub criterion D, says "result in other emissions such as those leading to odors or thus adversely affecting a substantial number of people." Now, I, I don't say that to say that one or two or three neighbors don't matter, but as far as the SEQA regulations and what we're required to analyze and what we rely on to make that less than significant determination, as well as our use permit findings, I just wanted to point that out, that it's, the key word is substantial number of people. Again, just purely based on the SEQA regulations anyway.
Thank you for that. Can I make a comment? This project, first of all, is, this is one of the most difficult decisions I think I've ever faced. I, as I've said before, I think a person's right to swing their fist ends where their neighbor's nose begins. And clearly, some noses are going to be hit with this project. If SEQA says you have to have a substantial number of noses, then I think that's a, a decision I'm going to feel more comfortable leaving up to SEQA. Combining that with the woman from the Audubon Society with her serious concern, I'm feeling right now that I can't support this project without full SEQA review. So that's where I am with it right now.
Okay, so I'm going to build on, on that. This, as Miley just said, this is a difficult project. And for me, as we've, we've heard, you know, a little bit of emotion from property owners, for me, it's problematic also because, and I have to kind of remove myself from that, but there are, I hate to see a project where we have neighbors not talking to neighbors. So where compatibility with a project is, is an issue. However, that's not just like, you know, considering as far as the, and no offense, because I totally respect family history and all of that, but I am making a land use decision today. So, and from a land use decision, and based, or not based on, but I'm going to refer to a comment that was made by one of the members of the public that spoke to this project, that it was well put together and this is a great project coming forward. My frustration actually in going through it, and this is where I have a lot of questions, because this project has been in the works for quite some time, I feel like there are gaps. There are things that should have, for this size of a project, should have been better, better answered. And I would almost prefer to defer, as I've brought up a couple of times now on the water, my concern is not so much with the water, whether there's availability of water for this project, but I am very concerned with the, with the impact on Poota Creek. So, and I don't think it's been proven to, for me to make a decision today on less than significant impact to a public resource. And I think that there's a test that could easily be done, a more extensive test on that well that could simulate what the project, even though the project isn't happening right now, there could be a well test, there could have been a well test done in the last few months that would better simulate what the situation is and what, if any, drawdown effect to Poota Creek. You know, whether there's any impact there so that I could firmly, you know, agree that there is no, there's less than significant impact. To the point that Donna from Red Bud also, you know, brought up some points. Again, I guess my point is, is there are, between water and biology, there are appropriate seasonal studies that have not happened with this project that has been in the works for quite a while. And so I, I just question, why haven't they been done so at the appropriate time?
Commissioners, if I may? In response to the Red Bud Audubon comment, there is actually a compiled biological and botanical assessment. The, on, it begins, I believe, page 51 or so of the Biological Resources. And it does state that there was, survey dates February 8th and 9th of 2021, and additionally, April 21st of 2021, and June 3rd of 2021. And that is on page 54 of 84.
Yeah, I'd also like to add, on that same topic, under the, the draft conditions of approval for Biological Resources, number four, prior to any ground disturbance or vegetation removal, the applicant shall have a pre-construction survey conducted by a qualified biologist for special status plant. This area, I think, has already been used in the past for farming. So I don't believe that there are huge impacts to any, you know, special status vegetation or species, but if there are before to ground disturbance, that has to be met as part of the conditions of approval.
Yes, in addition to bird nesting surveys as well, prior to construction.
Are there further questions or anything that you guys need to make your findings before we take on this item to a vote?
I just have, I have a question for staff. With the comments from the commissioners, hearing those, is the threshold in your guys' mind or analysis met to require a full EIR? And, and I think what I'm hearing is that's, what I'm hearing some of the commissioners say, I, I don't feel that's what's needed at this point. But I'm just trying to kind of gauge because this is a process that's going on. And, and what are the options of continuance again? And that being a path or actually bring it to a vote and deciding, is it, is it going to be permitted or applicants have to come back? You know, because otherwise, it's, I feel like some of these, some of these things have been addressed maybe to not our individual liking, but I, I can't, I can't make a decision off of my individual liking of this project. I have to go off of what the documents say and I'm comfortable with where the documents are taking us. So that's my question with the EIR.
Sure, I can speak to that and then perhaps County Council can jump in as well. So as far as staff's analysis as the lead agency, we go through the SEQA checklist. And if all impacts are determined to be less than significant with that mitigation, then an EIR is not prepared. Now, if that were not the case, then we would move forward to the EIR phase. SEQA relies on substantial evidence, which is defined in section 15384, and fair argument as, to get to that next level. And substantial evidence, it's a long definition, but I'll just cut to the chase here. It is, it says, "Whether a fair argument can be made that the project may have a significant effect on the environment is determined by examining the whole of the record before the lead agency. Argument speculated, speculation, unsubstantiated opinion or narrative, evidence which is clear, erroneous, or inaccurate, or evidence of social, economic impacts which do not contribute to or are not caused by physical impacts on the environment do not constitute substantial evidence." So in this case, we relied on the reports of, for example, the certified hydrogeologists, the qualified biologists and botanists, and that's what we used to back our findings of that. And I don't know if there's anything that Council would like to add.
To your question, Supervisor, your commission has, and any commissioner can bring a motion for, for any of these, your commission has three options. You can motion to approve the project as, as presented by staff. You can motion to approve the project as amended with suggested amendments. Excuse me. You can prove, you can motion to deny the project. And you can motion to continue the project. And in that instance, I, it, it would be a circumstance in which you, you believe that you can receive further information or that there's missing information or clarifications that do not, that would otherwise provided, provide, allow you to make the findings that are necessary to, to meet one of either the approval or denial motion. So if you do, in fact, if, if someone does motion and it does pass for a continuance, I would, would ask that you provide staff direction as to what information you'll need for, for a complete decision when it does return to you.
A question on what you just laid out. When you say approve with amendments, what would an amendment be that, would we add the amendment? I don't think we've done it before, at least. How does that work?
You may. Yeah, there may be, a commissioner could suggest an amendment to say the conditions of approval in order to, if, for example, you, you think that there may be a change in the project or a change in the conditions of approval that would allow you to make the findings that are necessary to make to approve the project, you can recommend that change. I will say, however, that you do run the risk of needing a continuance if you do make substantial changes that impact a SEQA evaluation. But that is possible, you can recommend changes to the project.
So an amendment might be to increase the project, decrease the project? What kind of, would that be an amendment?
Yes, that would be an amendment. So for example, if you've, if, if in your analysis, independent analysis and your weighing of the evidence, your commission determines that the project, for example, uses too much water, you can recommend an amendment to decrease the, the canopy size, for example, which would decrease the water use to whatever you think would, would meet evident, in an evidentiary way, meet the findings or allow you to make the findings that are necessary to vote yes on the project. Increases are a little trickier because they do, in fact, impact moving parts of the project. For example, suggesting a different location on the property, that would impact SEQA, things like that. So it would, it would depend on the recommended change. Conditions, you can recommend changes to conditions. If it's not impacting the physical environment and it's, say, for example, something that relates to, to certain ordinance requirements, it's difficult to say because this is land use and, and most everything impacts the, the physical environment. But there may be a recommended change that doesn't. And you can recommend something like that and it wouldn't have to go back to SEQA. But it really just depends on what, what, what the commission determines it needs in order to make the findings that are necessary.
Thank you. I don't think I understood amendments and how that worked. Thank you.
Yeah, so again, I'll reiterate that my, my issue is just, I can't come to the determination that there is a less than significant impact on Poota Creek without, without more study. The other thing that I guess I want to make comment to is that, as it was brought up, is that our general plan doesn't address cannabis as an agricultural crop. And again, the general plan is, is ready for an update. And that's one of the dilemmas also in, in coming to this decision because what we have traditionally and what the intent has been of the policies that are in the current general plan apply to the current agricultural crops that we've been working with since the plan was approved in 2008. And of course, with, with cannabis, this is a whole new world that brings, as we were talking before, about 25 gallon, or 25,000 gallon tanks that disrupt the, the aesthetic of the area. And these large membrane units, buildings, whatever you may call them, even though they're temporary, they are not, they disrupt, they disrupt the aesthetics of the area. And so that's the other piece that I've been struggling with is just knowing or basing some of this on the current general plan that we have. And the, the intent behind those is, I also question the compatibility of, of this project in that particular area. While on the other hand, too, again, it is, you know, somewhat removed and remote and, you know, and is, as we move forward with cannabis, an ideal location. But yet, that's kind of where my struggle is also. And so in my mind, this is not something that I can't work at changing your project and stuff, but it's, when you talk about the processing part of the project, you know, I just. I just, if those membranes could not exist, if they, if the whole processing of the product was done elsewhere, you know, that would help with the aesthetic and keeping with some of the, in my mind, the agricultural policies of our general plan. So those are my statements.
Commissioner Rosenthal, if I can respond from a staff's perspective to your comment?
Yes.
In 2019, the Board of Supervisors adopted a resolution of intent that recognized cannabis as an agricultural product. While it's not an agricultural commodity due to its federal status, it is an agricultural product according to our Board of Supervisors.
Yes, I, I understand that. Nonetheless, the general plan was also written in 2008 and, and there was intent behind those policies. So.
So I have a question for county council. I, I don't, I don't feel like there's going to be a resolution to this today. And so if we were to go through the several options you provided to consider the applicants, how, we, we can't motion for all of these. And, and so with that being said, I, I don't know how the applicants feel. I mean, to me, the, the checklist is what it is. The thresholds have been met through the checklist. I can't insert my own, my own standard. So that, that does concern me, not concern me, and I haven't heard an argument on our behalf on why, why, why we, why that threshold isn't being met per our view. So I, I just don't see where we're going to go unless a motion is made to either approve or deny this project. And so I want to consider the applicants before that's done. And if that's a motion that needs to be entertained, I, I want to make a motion and either get to a place where there's approval or denial, or if the applicant feels like continuation is something that they can do. It's, again, it's been a long process and I don't know what the next thing is going to be that we're saying we need. We clearly need the Board of Supervisor's direction for odor. We can't do anything with it until that happens. And so if we're trying to wait it out till then, I don't, I don't know. You know, and those are things I just sat here feeling like, you know, we got more to get to. I actually have an appointment later today. I didn't think we were going to be here this long. And so I just trying to consider all of this as we move forward together and consider the applicant.
Commissioner, you may bring a motion to continue if you like. Then, once that motion is on the floor, there would be a vote and it would either pass or fail. Same is true for a motion to approve and a motion to deny. If odor is an issue for you, I do have some elements that are generally considered in an impact analysis. If you'd like me to read them to you so that you can incorporate them to take a look at the, the evidence that's presented to you. You can also ask staff to, to come back with more detail as far as how their analysis was done for specific things, if you'd like more detail.
I would like to note that we do have one minute remaining and we cannot make a decision
I would like to continue this item to our next meeting. I'd like to request from staff a traffic study that basically I need to know whether Hidden Valley Lake is going to be, depending on this route, to evacuate in an emergency. And I would like some more time to evaluate. And I would like to hear from other members of the community about the issue regarding odor and how they feel about it.
Commissioner Field, also, instead of a traffic study, we can consult with maybe some evacuation, like our first responders or fire chiefs.
It could be a very easy question to answer.
But also, I, I'm going to address odor in the next item, actually, Article 27 amendments for cannabis. It does increase the setbacks to off-site residences, which is how the board directed us to address odor.
Okay, so I'll second the motion that Commissioner Field proposed.
Yep. If I may, Mr. Chair, if the motion could include either a time or time and date certain or, or a non-time and date certain?
Non-time date certain, the next meeting.
Would that work with staff?
We'll do time and date certain. We'll give it a time on the next meeting so that we don't have to repost.
January 8th, looks like the next meeting.
Okay, until January 8th.
And Pam, give us a time?
Pam, is this one actually? Was that Climate Action Plan?
Can we say 9:20?
Yes.
AM?
I second. All in favor? Aye.
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 All, all opposed? And the motion passes? So we will be taking our break. We'll see you guys January 8th. And we'll continue with our meeting for our next item after a one-hour staff lunch break. So thank you. Yeah, the next one, we'll just move on, yeah?